Good morning. It's good to see everyone. And we are going to make a little history today. We're going to discuss some subjects that are near and dear to the entire world, as a matter of fact. We're going to delve into the worlds of cryptocurrency. We're going to look at fintech, and we are going to look at its applications in New York State. We're going to have a series of these, and this is the first one. But we will start by not assuming that the world knows what we're speaking about. Let's assume that we need to find out what is cryptocurrency? What is a fintech and how is it applied? Later, we can speak of how it has been used or perhaps misused. We, of course, have to look at everything in light of what is happening in the banking.
Is your mic on?
Aye.
I think you turned it off.
You mean all of that? Am I?
There you go.
You know I couldn't do it twice, right?
That was good stuff, too.
It really was. What a shame. So you'll have to take the secondary version. Good morning, everyone. Good morning. I trust that you're having a more booming morning than I am. My name is Senator James Sanders Jr., and we will introduce the panel, not simply the panel, but my colleagues up here in a moment. But we are here to discuss two things that are cutting-edge in the nation and indeed in the world. The first one, of course, is cryptocurrency. What is it? Does it have any uses? Is it useful? Could it be used in New York State? And of course, along with that, the idea of fintech. What is a financial technology and how is it used or can it be used? Is it a good thing? Is it a bad thing? We will find these things out. My name again is James Sanders Jr., and I'm the Chair of Banking. And I'm going to allow all of my members to introduce and present themselves. I will, of course, present our ranker here. And I'm really glad to say that I brought him into this. And as being the ranker on Banking on Banking, and on his good days, he thanks me. And I trust that it is one of your good days, sir.
Yes, sir. Thank you for—
Mr. Borello.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. I appreciate it. Yes, and I do appreciate the advice and counsel and getting out of the banks committee. I think, you know, this is an important hearing today. I think, as someone wiser than me said, the only constant is change. And things are changing rapidly in technology, particularly when it relates to finances and banking and so forth. So it's good to talk about these things. And, you know, if New York is going to be understanding of these changes and how we can benefit and what the potential cautions are, then I think this is a great way for us to start. And I totally agree with you. Not everyone understands cryptocurrency, fintech, all those things. So to start off with a basic understanding for the average New Yorker, which I consider myself to be, is a good way for us to start. And I appreciate, again, you pulling this together.
Thank you. Senator Tedesco, if you want to say anything.
Yeah, just very briefly. As we know, New York leads in a lot of very positive ways. Some not so positive, and we're working on those. And this is one area I think we could potentially lead in, but we have to have the information and the understanding and the knowledge. And we have to be able to confer that with our constituents, because we're not only senators and public servants, we're more importantly representatives. So we have to represent them in the right way with this particular issue. And we look forward to the expertise we're going to hear to give us the information that will help us do that. And we thank you for your leadership in this, Senator Borello, and Senator Sanders, and all my colleagues. And look forward to the testimony. Thank you, Senator.
Thank you, sir. Senator Clear.
Yes, good morning. I'm Senator Cordell Clear. I represent a district that is very curious about this area. And, you know, the best way to find out what it's about is to have a hearing, because sometimes we think it's the boogeyman, but we don't know what it is. But that's what we think when we don't know what it is. So it's better that we do know and decide whether this is something that we really want to have. And I thank you all for coming here today. Chairman, thank you for having this very important, very important hearing. You know, I think about banking, and I think about my parents. I tell this story. They're both, they're both gone, but I couldn't convince them to use a debit card for nothing in the world because they didn't understand it. So my mother would make me go to the bank always and to the teller, get her slip, bring it back. So I think it's just so important that we're all armed with the knowledge and the information. And I thank you for doing this today.
You're more than welcome. Of course, no hearing of this type would be complete without Assemblymember Clyde Vannell, who is, I would argue, Albany's sharpest mind on these issues. And I'm very glad that he is able to join us here today. And he can slip me notes under the table explaining what people are telling me. Assemblymember Clyde Vannell.
First of all, Senator, I'd like to thank you for putting this together and understanding the need and importance to educate not only New Yorkers, but the legislature on these matters. Such important matters of what's happening for the future and what's happening tomorrow. When it comes to fintech, when it comes to cryptocurrency, this is the first asset class born in our lifetime. You know, just relatively, an adolescent, if it was a person, right? Born, you know, on October 31st, 2008 with the Bitcoin White Paper. But we have to make sure that a number of things that what we do is right here in New York. We have to make sure that, one, we try to close the digital divide and try to close the wealth gap. Two, we have to try to make sure that we provide an environment that's open for innovation and business and people to be able to start and build entrepreneurship in this space. We also have to make sure that we have a safe environment for consumers, for investors, for average investors and for users. And we have to protect consumers. We are, we live in a state where the world is watching us. We have some of the best agencies in the world that folks are watching. We have some of the best attorneys in the world that folks are watching to make sure that we protect New Yorkers. And, you know, when we make policies, you know, the federal government watches, state watches, the other states watch, and the world watches. So I'm very excited that, under the leadership that we have here, we are trying to figure out the right way forward and to do it properly. So thank you for having me here. Thank you for having the lower house sit on this also. Really appreciate it.
Thank you. Thank you. One day, ah, there we go. I want to, of course, thank all of the staff that worked hard to put this together. I want to thank the President of the Senate, who is very interested in these matters. I want to alert everyone that the budget is still being discussed and that you will see people come in and out as need be. But I, with your luck, I will be with you the whole time. In the future, we are going to look into new areas of banking, including the impact of AI on banking. We're, we're going to go there. And I believe that we are ready. I'm going to call the first two witnesses. And I have Mr. D'Angelo from the Attorney General's Office and Mr. Martin from the Department of, the New York State Department of Financial Services. Because I'm trying to stay on the right side, I'm going to let Mr. D'Angelo go first because I don't want to have her office mad at me. Sir, if you will introduce yourself, and you are now our first speaker.
Thank you very much. Can you hear me? Great.
Yes.
Thank you so much for the opportunity to present today regarding the Attorney General's work and our views on regulating the cryptocurrency industry. My name is Chris D'Angelo, and I'm the Chief Deputy for Economic Justice at the Attorney General's Office. I would like to thank Chair Sanders and Ranking Member Borello for inviting us to this hearing. And thank the entire committee for having us here to discuss this very important set of issues. The Office of the Attorney General is the state securities and commodities regulator for New York. As part of that work, we regulate many of the participants in the cryptocurrency industry and take enforcement action where necessary to hold them accountable for violations of the law. Our work is complementary to and often coordinated with our sister regulator, the Department of Financial Services, which also has a critical role in regulating and supervising many of the cryptocurrency industry participants. Participants in the crypto industry have made bold claims about the promise of digital assets, stating that they will expand access to underserved communities, replace existing payment mechanisms, serve as a form of digital gold to hold value in times of economic stress, and even replace government-backed fiat currencies. The White House, among others, have raised questions about whether, after more than a decade and billions of dollars of investment, the industry has demonstrated progress in achieving these objectives. Our office is agnostic to that debate. But our experience regulating the industry leads us to the conclusion that it needs more comprehensive and consistent regulation. The volatility, lack of transparency, conflicts of interest, and fraud that permeate the market must be addressed so that investors are protected and so that the industry is competing on a fair and even playing field. I want to be clear that when we talk about enhanced regulation, our office distinguishes between digital assets on the one hand and blockchain technology on the other hand. Although they are often lumped together, they are distinct and easily separated. Innovation in blockchain very well could be funded through the sale of equity in traditional and regulated securities markets. And very few of the proposed use cases even necessitate a floating or volatile cryptocurrency coin for implementation. Today, I will focus my testimony on the core risks we see in the digital asset industry, based on our regulatory and enforcement work, and where we see the need for stronger regulation to fill gaps in the existing framework. To date, the digital asset industry has been singularly non-compliant in its existing obligations. And I want to be clear, because I know you hear from my colleague at DFS, who has great expertise here, they often get the benefit of dealing with those institutions who have chosen to be regulated and get licensed here in New York and make effort to follow the law. Oftentimes, our offices find ourselves in the situation of enforcing the law against entities who sell to New Yorkers despite having not taken the opportunity to register with us and try to follow our existing laws and regulations. So in the last couple of months alone, our office has commenced enforcement actions against major cryptocurrency platforms KuCoin and Coinex and the former CEO of the now-defunct Celsius platform Alex Mashinsky for their violations of New York's Martin Act. Every day, we are reminded firsthand by New Yorkers who contact our office and tell us their stories about how they lost their savings. For instance, we received a complaint from one customer of Voyager, a now-bankrupt cryptocurrency platform that experienced a run. The customer recounted how they lost access to $581,000 in cash and $40,000 worth of digital assets. The customer complained that Voyager advertised that his cash deposits would be safe and insured by the FDIC. Of course, they were not. He described his investment as his entire life savings for his family. A key risk with the cryptocurrency industry is that cryptocurrencies often purport to be a thing of value, a substitute for the US dollar even. But most cryptocurrencies have no intrinsic value. They generally do not provide investors with an ownership or equity stake in a company like a corporate stock, nor do they represent a creditor's ownership of a debt obligation like the holder of a corporate bond. Unlike with an equity investment, where a company has an obligation to take steps to maximize profits for the benefit of a shareholder, no such obligation exists to ensure that money spent purchasing a crypto coin will be used for the long-term benefit of the coin holder. As a result, investors who purchase crypto often end up as mere speculators, betting that another speculator will come along to buy the coin at a higher price. Second, the cryptocurrency industry often consolidates functions vertically in ways that create conflicts of interest that pose significant risks to investors and the broader economy. In some cases, cryptocurrency platforms act as the issuer of their own crypto, trade crypto they created and control on their own platform, act as the custodian of other customers' crypto, borrow customers' crypto, mingle that crypto with their own crypto, and then provide advice on investment of customer crypto assets. We have known for decades that this kind of vertical integration is rife with conflicts of interest and is harmful to investors. In the securities markets, these conflicts are managed through heavy regulation of each activity in which a securities firm engages. That is rarely the case, however, in the crypto industry. So it cannot be a surprise when, for example, FTX, a now-defunct crypto exchange, used customer assets without customer consent to prop up its own struggling sister company, a hedge fund called Alameda. These are the very conflicts of interest that our office warned about back in 2018 through our Virtual Markets Integrity Initiative report. Thankfully, New York's Department of Financial Services denied the application from FTX to do business in New York. And so New Yorkers were spared the fallout from that particular collapse. Third, crypto companies have fewer protections against runs. Many cryptocurrency companies bill themselves as alternatives to banks. "Give us your crypto," they say. "We will lend it out and pay you interest." However, most cryptocurrency companies are not examined by any regulator, state or federal. They certainly do not have deposit insurance like a bank. And most do not operate pursuant to net capital requirements or maintain minimum reserves to meet liabilities to prevent a run. Recently, more than 330,000 customers lost approximately $900 million with the collapse of the Gemini Earn program, a cryptocurrency investment program jointly offered by Gemini, New York's Gemini Trust Company and the now-bankrupt Genesis Global Capital. After Gemini Earn customers and others scrambled to withdraw $827 million from Genesis over several days in November, the company halted withdrawals because it lacked the reserves to repay its customers. While the situation was analogous to a bank run, Genesis was unable to access relief that's ordinarily available to federally insured banks, such as discounted loans that the Federal Reserve issues to fulfill customer withdrawals. Moreover, rather than an orderly liquidation process managed by the FDIC, which many may be familiar with with recent banking collapses, that would preserve access to customer funds while the FDIC figures out what to do with the failing institution, Genesis investors have limited rights in the bankruptcy process and may never be made whole. Finally, cryptocurrencies are often the weapon of choice for criminals and fraudsters. The Federal Trade Commission reported that in 2021, 46,000 people reported to the agency losses of over $1 billion in cryptocurrency, a nearly 60-fold increase from 2018. Other sources put the numbers much, much higher. Chainalysis, a blockchain analytics firm, reports that scammers absconded with a record $14 billion in 2021, and that cryptocurrency theft has increased by 516% from 2020. Crypto is an attractive vehicle for criminals for a few reasons. First, anonymity allows criminals and fraudsters to hide in the shadows. Second, there is no bank or centralized authority that is tasked with identifying suspicious transactions or suspect wallets across the industry. No market participant is accountable for rooting out fraud before it happens. And unlike the traditional securities industry, no one has visibility into the full trading activity occurring across the marketplace. Third, there are no do-overs on the blockchain. A transaction made on the blockchain cannot be undone, reversed, or unwound. And as a result, customers and investors are often left without much recourse. All of these concerns are particularly troubling in light of the fact that lower-income investors and people of color appear to bear the cost of these risks disproportionately. There is a term for this, predatory inclusion, which some have used to describe the participation of people of color in the cryptocurrency marketplace. Predatory inclusion refers to marginalized communities gaining access to goods, services, or opportunities they were historically excluded from. But this access comes with conditions that undermine its long-term benefits and may reproduce insecurity to these same communities. Payday loans and subprime mortgages provide other examples in our financial services history. According to a study by the J.P. Morgan Chase Institute regarding investments made prior to the 2022 collapse in digital asset values, lower-income households bought crypto at substantially higher prices. As a result, lower-income households bore the disproportionate share of losses when the bubble burst. Further, an Atlantic article from this past fall points out that perhaps no other demographic group has been harder hit by crypto, the crypto bust than black Americans, who are half as likely to own stock as their white counterparts, but significantly more likely to own cryptocurrencies. Because black investors piled into the crypto market at or near its most recent top, many of those investors are now in the red. In conclusion, our work regulating the crypto industry has identified the need for stronger, more comprehensive regulation to address the risks discussed in this testimony today, as well as many others. To outsiders, the industry appears complex. Industry participants have developed a seemingly impenetrable glossary of jargon. But in our experience, that jargon obscures activities that are not substantially different from the traditional financial services world. Yet, at the same time, these new companies often operate on the periphery of the regulatory system without the protections ordinarily afforded to investors and the public. We should put an end to that in New York. This new industry is not unique in that regard. Similarly, financial engineers develop subprime mortgage-backed securities and complex derivatives products, allegedly managing the risk of investing in the housing market. To the outsider, the risks were opaque, shrouded in jargon that inhibited effective oversight and regulation. When the risks materialized, it was homeowners and the broader economy, not the financial engineers, who bore the costs. Just as was true in the mortgage market of the early 2000s, although the new mousetrap may look a little different than the old mousetrap, it still presents the very same risk of a user being caught. We should not let our fear of interfering with innovation cause us to wait to impose appropriate regulations to address the risks we know exist from centuries of experience. Our office is actively considering proposed regulations to address this gap that exists today. And we look forward to working with you and your colleagues to take action, as well as our colleagues at the Department of Financial Services, who we coordinate with closely. Thank you again for your time, and I look forward to taking your questions.
Thank you, Mr. D'Angelo. Mr. Martin.
Is this, is this on?
Yeah.
All right. Good afternoon, Chair Sanders, Ranking Member Borello, Senator Clear, Senator Tedesco, Assemblymember Vannell. My name is Peter Martin, and I'm the Deputy Superintendent of Virtual Currency at the New York Department of Financial Services. You'll also hear me referred to as the Virtual Currency Chief, a moniker I inherited from my predecessor. Thank you for inviting me to today's hearings. For context, DFS has in place the most comprehensive virtual currency regulation in the United States. New York's virtual currency framework has been in place since 2015 and is built on the model of full-scope banking supervision, but tailored to address unique considerations and risks associated with the cryptocurrency industry. Where new issues arise, we quickly respond with new guidance and tailored supervision to address safety and soundness and consumer protection concerns. It has served well to protect New York consumers, keep virtual currency entities safe and sound, and hold bad actors to account. Before I begin, I want to take a moment to thank Senator Sanders and the rest of the legislature for your support of DFS's virtual currency regulatory framework. My team in the virtual currency unit is grateful for the assessment authority that you and your college granted in last year's budget. This month, we finalize the assessment regulation, and our entities will begin to be assessed in May. As the leading prudential regulator of cryptocurrency, DFS must continue to build our virtual currency unit so that we can continue to strengthen DFS's nation-leading regulatory approach for the protection of New Yorkers. Since January 2022, we have added more than 40 examiner-trainees and experienced professionals to the virtual currency unit, including seasoned experts specializing in anti-money laundering, anti-fraud, cybersecurity, data governance, financials and accounting, and more. Given the department's leading and longstanding approach to regulating this space, Superintendent Harris testified in front of the House Financial Services Committee just last week. As federal legislators contemplate a national framework for regulating stable coins, I suspect that will in no small part build on the work that New York has been doing for the last half-decade in the stablecoin space. Numerous federal legislators on both sides of the aisle, as well as foreign regulators who we coordinate with closely, have cited DFS's framework as the gold standard, recognizing the important work that the DFS plays in overseeing such a fast-moving space. Regulators like DFS can often act more nimbly than federal counterparts, given our ability to modernize regulations and guidance more quickly to respond to market events, industry developments, and to support responsible innovation. To that end, the department has a wide range of tools to regulate the industry. That includes licensing through the application process, supervision through ongoing monitoring of our entities, onsite examinations across our laws, regulations, guidance, and bespoke supervisory agreements for each entity, and, as needed, enforcement actions. Underpinning all of the department's regulatory and supervisory actions are robust capital and financial standard requirements, strong consumer protections, sophisticated cybersecurity standards, where New York really was the lead in developing cybersecurity standards that subsequently were adopted by many other states and at the federal level, strong anti-money laundering, anti-fraud provisions, which, again, New York has demonstrated a more robust approach than we've seen in DC, both with respect to Bank Secrecy Act and anti-money laundering provisions, as well as with respect to anti-fraud provisions like wash trading, front-running, and other typologies specific to the virtual currency space. For example, virtual currency entities are subject to custody and capital requirements designed to address industry-specific risks. Entities must hold virtual currency in the same type and amount on a one-to-one basis as that owed or obligated to a customer. We recently produced custody guidance to clarify asset requirements, as well as the nature of the custodial architecture designs to safeguard that for New Yorkers. That is distinct from traditional banking fractional reserve system and has kept New York safe amid significant market turmoil in the industry over the past two years. Of note, FTX made public that they had a charter application pending in New York. However, the approval requirements DFS maintains are designed to attach, to catch the issues on display with FTX. There is no scenario where FTX would have been approved to do business in New York, even prior to the events in New York. That includes reviews of conflicts of interest, inter-affiliate exposure, cybersecurity, anti-money laundering, and corporate governance standards New York has in place in a manner that is unique to Department of Financial Services requirements. The same is true for other now-defunct virtual currency entities, including Voyager, which my colleague mentioned earlier. Once an entity meets rigorous standards to be licensed or chartered here in New York, the DFS creates a supervisory agreement tailored to that company's risks. Companies must then get approval from the department for material changes of business. That includes new products, for example, the issuance of a stable coin. Entities are also subject to ongoing supervision and are examined for compliance with regulation, their supervisory agreements, and upcoming guidances that we've developed. For example, in February of this year, the department ordered one of our trust companies to cease the minting and issuance of a stable coin as a result of several unresolved issues related to its oversight of a key counterparty and marketing partner, Binance. Through this supervisory action, and I would underscore this was done through supervision and not through enforcement, the department was able to fix risks before consumers were harmed and enforcement action was necessary. Notably, this action made DFS the first regulator to address significant national security and consumer protection concerns related to Binance. And we are now seeing federal and foreign regulators quickly following in our footsteps. DFS also has the authority to take enforcement action against a company where we find it is not in compliance with laws and regulations. Our enforcement division, which importantly sits outside of my virtual currency unit, we have a standalone enforcement division as well as standalone cybersecurity divisions, can investigate and take appropriate actions to ensure that companies pay penalties for violations, remediate issues, and where appropriate, return lost funds to customers. But I want to make clear that comprehensive regulation to protect markets, to protect the entities operating in this space, and most importantly, to protect New Yorkers, does not work exclusively through enforcement. In the year and a half since Superintendent Harris and my arrival, DFS has strengthened this responsive oversight by acquiring technologies specific to the virtual currency space. That includes blockchain, multiple blockchain analytics tools, risk monitoring tools. We've onboarded 25-plus external experts within the virtual currency unit. And we have developed both training certifications and on-the-ground training for our new hires. That supports real-time supervisory awareness of our entities and the applications in the queue to be licensed or chartered in New York. For example, the New York now has a trained team in place who can review wallet addresses and transaction hashes associated with DFS-regulated entities and their counterparties to identify potential illicit finance activity. potential illicit finance activity. To that end, we work very closely with FinCEN, with the Office of Foreign Asset Controls and Treasury, the Department of Justice, and other law enforcement agencies and prosecutors like the New York Attorney General's Office to make sure that if there is illicit activity on these platforms, that bad actors are held to account. Recent market events have demonstrated that DFS's regulatory framework is operating as intended. Now more than ever, consumers need to know that their assets are protected. And I would argue the most important consumer protection is often not one written in the black-and-white letter of the law, but to have a nimble regulator who understands the space and has the flexibility and agility to respond to industry developments as they arise. I am proud of the work DFS has done to develop and maintain a comprehensive supervisory framework and to foster a well-regulated and trusted virtual currency industry and broader ecosystem here in New York. We would welcome further collaboration with you to take advantage of our lessons learned. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Great. Hello? One day I will master this. We have been joined by the Assembly's Chair on the Subcommittee on the Underbanked, hopefully I got it right, Khalil Anderson, Assemblymember Khalil Anderson. I have several questions, but I'm going to yield and come back later. We will hear from our ranker first.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. First of all, thank you both for being here today. We appreciate it. I'm going to direct my questions to DFS. And first of all, you know, it's impressive to see that you've been operating in this space since 2015 and that we are ahead of the curve, and certainly as well for your office as well, the Attorney General's Office. But specifically, you mentioned the framework for regulation. This is obviously, you know, a complex and international effort. So could you kind of explain how your framework is, you know, what the framework of the regulation and how it works? I know you spoke to a little bit in your opening comments, but maybe dive into it a little bit more.
Yeah. Is this on?
Yes.
So, thank you for your question, Senator. In practice, the way that the DFS operates is that in order to operate and conduct virtual currency business activity, which is defined in our regulations, you need to come through the DFS through the front door to obtain either a bit license or a limited-purpose trust company. In order to obtain that license, you have to go through our applications team, which conducts character and fitness vetting of key personnel. It reviews the accounting statements to understand, you know, how is this making money? It goes through cybersecurity standards, which are frankly quite unique to the DFS. That includes vulnerability assessments, penetration assessments, multi-factor authentication. It includes reviews of anti-money laundering and anti-fraud. This is an area that's a lot of fraud and risks in the space, including things like ransomware, pump-and-dump schemes. So the New York Department of Financial Services has consistently put out regs through the Bit License in 2015 and subsequent guidance to police this space to make sure bad actors are held to account. Once you have the AML, the cyber, the operational risk, and the character and fitness reviews in place, you receive a license or a charter, at which point you obtain a supervisory agreement that the DFS uses to tailor to the specific business needs of that entity. So if you're a stablecoin issuer, you will have additional provisions that we've put forward in the Stablecoin Guidance last year around asset backing, disclosures, consumer protection requirements. So licensure, supervisory agreements, and then it's a very hands-on space. So I have 57 people reporting to me. They wake up, they spend all day working on crypto supervision, or they work on a Bit License application, they wake up the next day and do that again. This is a space where you need someone who does this all day and understands the space very closely. And thank you again to the legislature for passing the assessment authority, as now we can help to resource ourselves to that end. Following the supervisory process and ongoing monitoring, entities are also subject to onsite examination, which basically runs the book against the laws or regs, the guidance, and those supervisor agreements to verify that those entities remain in compliance with our standards.
So based on that, essentially, since this is, you know, I mean, anybody could have invested, for example, in FTX's cryptocurrency. So really, this role is to essentially give a stamp of approval of New York State's, you know, of the regulators of New York State, that this is a safe place to invest your money? Is that what?
Yes, sir. I would underscore FTX was not licensed to operate in New York, and as the numbers come out, it will become very clear that New Yorkers were very much removed from the direct impact of FTX. We, of course, are very concerned around contagion risk in the broader cryptocurrency ecosystem, but New Yorkers themselves were much less impacted, unless they were doing this in an unlicensed capacity, would not be able to engage with FTX specifically.
Great. Well, with that, in your view, do you see any evidence of the impact of these regulations and the current market conditions that these regulations have had?
I think it's safe to say that, you know, I inherited an applications backlog. I have approved four bet licenses in the last 15 months. The applications queue remains high. People want to come in through the front door. Here at the New York Department of Financial Services, in absence of true national or federal framework, it's DFS. People want to come to DFS through the front door and meet our standards, as that is something that bestows trust in an industry sorely needing it.
And you mentioned that Superintendent Harris did testify recently in front of the House in Washington. Is that correct?
Yes, sir. She testified at the House Financial Services Committee on Stable Coins last week.
Excellent. So, you know, I'm assuming that that means some of the best practices here in New York might be adopted on a national level?
I sure hope so.
Great. Well, I'll wait for a second round so you can continue and give more people opportunities to speak. So, thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, sir. We're going to hear from Senator Cleer, and then Senator Tedesco, and Assemblymember Vannell. But let me offer, we've also been joined by Assemblymember Steve Otis, the Chair of Science and Technology. Good to see you back with your laptop. We don't mind, in fact, we'd be honored if you come and join us.
I would join you, but I have a 1:00, so I didn't want to come and go like that, but I wanted to hear.
We appreciate what we can get. Senator Cleer?
Sure. I want to thank both of you for that extensive testimony, and I learned a lot from both of you. I had some questions, but I think I have to go on another path based on the testimony that was offered by Mr. DeAngelo. And specifically, I'd like to ask DFS, you know, we are trying to break down barriers, racism, institutional racism. And in your testimony, Mr. DeAngelo, you talked about the predatory inclusion, and you stated the fact that no other demographic group has been hit harder than blacks. What is, and I listened to your testimony and all of the framework, you know, you have the licensing, you have the supervision, you have the enforcement, but is there a sensitivity to blacks being a part of something yet again that is going to victimize them? And what have we done in terms of the disparities, both with the cryptocurrency users, and I guess the providers on that level? What are we doing to create equity and stop any new or continuing forms of institutional racism and the predatory inclusion that Mr. DeAngelo talked about?
This on again? Yep. Senator Cleer, thank you for your question. I think from the beginning of the Bit License regime, we've had a very important focus on consumer protection. If you look, for example, at Part 200.19, it says very clear requirements on explaining the material risks associated with cryptocurrency. And from a customer disclosure protection perspective, we've really set the bar for what you can and can't do in the cryptocurrency space. I think the second thing I would say is DFS has not licensed a lot of the bad actors we've heard described today, and that has done a lot to prevent harm across the cryptocurrency ecosystem. Third, I would just generalize and note, outside of the cryptocurrency ecosystem, DFS has consistently taken a leadership position with respect to, you know, predatory, you know, inclusion as described before. That includes not just cryptocurrency, but check-cashing and other areas where we've seen exorbitant fees, and I look forward to continuing with that work with the team.
Well, thank you. I'd like to follow up, because I'm looking at this as a relatively new industry.
Yep.
And for us to already see that blacks are being hardest hit in this industry, I think we have an opportunity here that I don't want to miss for us to level the playing field and make sure that this is something that everybody is protected in and not just one group constantly suffering the disparities. So I'm just going to leave with this final question. You know, what guidance can the industry expect from the agency going forward? What is it that DFS has?
Thank you for the question. At a very high level, I would say our regulations were designed to protect New Yorkers and the most vulnerable, specifically on our future state actions. I think you can expect common deficiencies in the applications process. So where we see unlicensed activity outside of our regulatory perimeter, they understand how to avoid those risks. Within our regulatory perimeter, you can expect more on consumer protection and disclosures to prevent that bad activity. And would just underscore whether it's the cost of fees, the customer onboarding process, anti-money laundering checks, where you can't send out or in too much money right when you show up to prevent romance scams, elderly financial exploitation. We've seen a lot of risks in this space, and that's why that requires a hands-on regulator like we have DFS.
Okay. And this question is for both of you. Is there anything that either or both of your agencies doing to educate certain communities? And when you talk, I chair the Aging Committee, I could see this being a problem for many of my seniors. What are we doing to make sure that people are educated on the risk? And where can they go to complain, or if they think something has happened that shouldn't have happened, or get questions answered?
So I can say, you know, our office has put out a number of investor alerts that we try to communicate key risks that we think are in the marketplace. Of course, not everyone's reading the AG's investor alerts. So we also would love to partner with you, and if there are ways in which we can get the message out to your constituents in your community about where there are risks and how they can protect themselves, we would welcome the opportunity to do that and happy to connect our staffs to make sure that happens. The other thing I would say is they can complain to the New York Attorney General's Office, as I know that they can also complain to DFS for DFS-licensed institutions as well. Either one of us, I know, will take action to make sure that investors are protected with every tool that we have available to us. No, it's our belief that those tools need to be strengthened. They're good, but they're not good enough to meet the challenges we see here. But we certainly will do everything we can within our power to protect New Yorkers where we know that they've been harmed, and we've been doing that actively already, and look forward to partnering more with you.
Yeah, thank you. I would just add, within the Bit License regime, there's explicit requirements about maintaining customer complaints policies with clear whistleblowing in place. That's been in place from day one. We're actively monitoring customer complaints across our licensee entity base for trends, patterns, to provide further guidance. To that end, there's a lot of specific red flags targeting in particular the elderly in this space. We work very closely with our entities to make sure, you know, anti-money laundering, I think, gets a bad rap. But within the anti-money laundering space, there's specific kind of bad behavior that are described as typologies, and our entities are required to have corresponding detection scenarios to map against those typologies or teach their frontline personnel to understand when they see bad behavior, to escalate it as appropriate, to work with FinCEN and Manhattan District Attorney's Office when they see kind of illegal, potentially suspicious activity. So it's been an area of focus from the beginning for the DFS.
Well, thank you for that. Similar to the Attorney General's Office, who offered to work with me, I would like to work with your office, because I want to drill down on our seniors being taken advantage of. That's a serious problem. Oftentimes, that is their life savings. That is all they have. And also, if we can look at ways to, again, level the playing field, not just for the users, but for the providers of these services. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Tedesco, if you wish.
Yes. Thank you, Chairman. Mr. DeAngelo, you, in terms of a structural issue of cryptocurrency, you talked about some nightmares for my constituents and for New Yorkers as it relates to this issue. Are you under the mindset, and is the Attorney General under the mindset, that cryptocurrency is a bad deal no matter what in New York State?
That's not our job to make that determination about whether crypto is a bad deal or not. It is our job to make sure that investors who choose to take on the risks understand the risks that they're taking on and are in a position to manage those risks effectively and are protected from fraud and market manipulation. And we think today, there just isn't enough transparency or management of the conflicts of interest across the marketplace. There's some of that, and I would agree that DFS has done a great job with their Bit License to raise the bar with the institutions that they regulate. I think there's more that we could do to solidify that. We have also done quite a bit through the entities that need to register with us through our securities and commodities regulatory regime to raise the bar with those institutions as well and to take enforcement actions. But there are gaps, and there are challenges that are specific to this industry that we think could be bad. In terms of whether it's a good deal or not, I think that's a question that investors need to make, but they need to make it with their own, with full information, with true transparency, without risk of manipulation. And I would also encourage you to ask the industry folks who are going to testify here at some point and that you speak to in other circumstances, because I think whether or not it's a good deal for New York and whether or not it presents a place where we want to push and foster innovation, which is a question more for you than it is for our office, is dependent on whether or not those use cases are bearing out in reality. Whether the thing that's causing these cryptocurrency or virtual assets or digital assets to have value is based on a promise that some problem is going to be solved, and I would encourage you to ask them for the concrete examples where those problems are being solved today. And then on the other side, how they're managing the risks that are present, because, you know, these institutions, even where they are bit-licensed, there are some rare exceptions, even where they are regulated in some way, very rarely have the same protections in terms of run risk that you might find in the traditional banking sector. And so if you're offering a product that looks like a bank product, but you're calling it investment product, there's some tension there and some complexity to how you regulate that particular product. I think we're working through that with the existing authorities we have, but we need to do more to try to raise the bar and protect people, so.
Mr. Martin, do you have an answer to that question he brought up about a promise of something at the end of this?
Sir, I would say, at the end of the day, the DFS has been a consistent leader in allowing industries to grow within a regulated manner. As you see areas, like when we see the market turmoil, like with FTX, there is a flight to safety. That flight to safety is DFS-regulated institutions. As we've seen potential innovations, whether it's, you know, putting baseball cards on the blockchain or improving our aging payment infrastructure, there's a path forward to do that within the regulatory perimeter, and in practice, we're seeing that here at DFS.
Thank you.
Thank you. I'm scared to just leave. Let me say something, but I think I will leave. Let's try.
My button is not working, so I can't tell when it's on and off. Having said that, I think I'll use yours in the future. Having said that, I will, I believe that Assemblymember Vannell, yours was the bill that they are speaking about, that this cutting-edge, first-in-the-nation bill that we've heard, spoken about. Was that your initiative, sir?
I get into that. First of all, Senator, I want to remind you, so I used to work for your office back in 2014, and there was a point where there was a, one of the platforms called Mt. Gox that collapsed, and we were going to have a hearing, and you were making me call, trying to get Bitcoin to come and testify, or blockchain to testify. And we were trying to figure that out back in 2014. But I say that to say how advanced New York is. At the same time, you know, we had the newly-formed DFS promulgate the Bit License. And at that time, folk in the industry were, for years, were frustrated about the Bit License, but it shows how forward-thinking New York is, where we protected many New Yorkers on many of the different kinds of collapse that happened, you know, across the world. I don't want to name any of them, but, and also, we also want to thank the Attorney General's Office for taking stances, like KuCoin and others, to be able to do so. One thing I want, one question I have is, so I think we have offense and defense here, right? We have the Office of Attorney General here that, you know, that is playing defense, and DFS that plays offense and defense. But do we have the right framework to capture the malfeasance in the industry? Now, keep in mind, I don't want to also frame that the whole industry is bad, right? So, but do we- So, but do we have the proper framework, a proper legal framework, to, to work between the Attorney General's Office and the, and DFS?
Sure, maybe I can start. So, so I would say, Assemblymember, thank you for the question. In practice, I think it's fair to say the virtual currency unit has been growing very aggressively to address new risks, as well as opportunities in this space. So where we see the regulatory perimeter expand, whether it's stablecoin issuance on a new protocol, new custodians, new technologies associated with virtual currency custody in general, I think you can continue to see DFS take a leadership role, not just in the nation, but globally. We have memorandum of understanding, effectively, information agreements with a lot of the leading other foreign regulators that are working to see where the edge of good looks like. DFS also has been a consistent partner with other law enforcement and prosecutorial agencies, DOJ, the, the National Cryptocurrency Enforcement Task Force, the IRS Criminal Investigations Team, Finson, as well as the New York Attorney's General's Office, where we see bad actors to hold them to account.
Yep. And I would agree, I think we, the, the two agencies have a very good working relationship, and are, are on regular calls with one another specifically to talk about the crypto space. I would say, I think, I, I would, I would point, I think both agencies would say we play both offense and defense all the time, and all the places we regulate, but I think we, we do so as effectively as we can with the authorities we have. To your question about whether we have the right framework, I think we have the beginnings of a very good framework for how to do this. We, I think it was built at a time where there was a lot less understood about where the industry was going than we know today. And I think, knowing what we know today, there's more that we can do to tighten regulations, to, to shore up the perimeter, as my colleague would say here, and ensure that there aren't opportunities to folks to evade our collective authorities. Because we don't want to have to go after the fact, and sue a company like Celsius or their, their CEO after they're in bankruptcy, and they've, and they've, you know, harmed 330,000 investors, right? That's, that's not a win, in my book, for, for us. A win is that we've, we have protected New Yorkers on the front end from, from that kind of failure. And, and I think we can create a framework to do that, and we can continue to lead, both here in New York, and by projecting to the, the folks in, in DC, if they want to listen about what laws they should be passing to try to shore things up nationally. But I think in terms of where we are today, we've got good working relationships, good coordination, both with, in the state and with our partners, as my colleague said, elsewhere. And, and we're, we're continuing to, to do what we can with what we have.
So, so you guys use primarily the Martin Act? Do you have other tools that, that you use in respect to this space?
Predominantly, we use the Martin Act in this particular marketplace. The, the AG, as you know, has pretty broad authorities, but, but under the Martin Act, if, if you are a security, if you are an issuer, a broker-dealer, or, or investment advisor in the securities or commodity space, we don't have to deal with the complexity about whether something's a securities or a, a security or a commodity for us, our jurisdiction to be triggered. If you are acting in that capacity, you must register affirmatively with the New York State Attorney General, just as in, in various instances, when you're operating in the virtual asset world, you need to license with the DFS. And, and then you come under our purview through that registration. Now, a lot of the work we've been doing lately, as a regulator and as an enforcer, has been finding those institutions that neither license themselves with the DFS, nor register with the Attorney General, and yet continue to peddle securities and commodities to the people of New York in the shadows. Some of them do it in quite big shadows, you know? Celsius was a very big company, operating out of New York, harmed many, many people, promising to hold their money in a manner that was safer than holding it at a bank. How one could make that claim when they have no FDIC insurance is beyond me, but they did so nonetheless, and a whole lot of people were harmed in the process. So we need a system that gets at that right from the front end. Because we, we can't allow New Yorkers to have to wait for justice down the line, many years down the line, when enforcement or some other bankruptcy proceeding serves them justice later on. Especially where, as we know, the people that are going to be disproportionately harmed are low-income people, and people of color, who often get pulled into the bubble at the very end, to try to prop that bubble up for the folks who want to make their exit.
All right, my last question, Mr. Martin, just three-part question, real fast. So, I wanted to talk about the assessment authority, and see where we are with respect to that, and how many hires we've had since, I guess it didn't happen yet, or when that, when that's going to hit. I wanted to ask about the, whether or not you guys are able to reach the unlicensed folks, right? Whether or not you guys are able to reach the, you know, the folks without the bit license? And also, I, did you guys work on having a division on financial inclusion, or what have you? I remember speaking to you guys about that before.
Thank you, Assemblymember. I'm, I'm the crypto guy, so I will defer to the experts at DFS. But to answer your questions in order, yes, assessment fees go out as soon as May. Yes, we are hiring aggressively. We've tripled the team in the 15, 16 months I've been here under, under the superintendent. I don't remember your third question. And yes, we have, we have just built an Office of Financial Inclusion.
All right, to be able to reach the unlicensed.
Oh, yes, thank you. So with respect to unlicensed virtual currency business activity, as it's defined in the reg, we work with our applicants to make sure they have geo-blocking and other controls in place, so they can't touch New Yorkers pending licensure, and are working with folks such as my colleagues to determine where we see unlicensed activity, where there's no effort even being made through the applications process, to address that as appropriate. Thank you.
Thank you, sir. Thank you, sir. I will hear from Assemblymember Anderson, if he, if he wishes.
Thank you so much, Chair Sanders, and to all of my colleagues who are here today, and to the AG's office, as well as DFS. Thank you for both being here. So I have two quick questions related to the security of the cryptocurrency itself. So I was watching, and this is for folk who get a chance to binge-watch and watch some stuff, I was watching, last week tonight, John Oliver. And he did a second-part series around cryptocurrency. The first one he did in 2018, the last one he did last week, tonight. And my question, after watching that series, is something that we sort of have been talking about in concert, and my colleagues have brought it up as well today, is, I, I wonder what your agencies are doing to verify the legitimacy of these different types of currencies? I'll take, for example, they were talking about Terra. Terra was a currency that was backed by Luna, and it was supposed to be dollar for dollar, US dollar for Terra. And then it turned out that that was not true. And the founder of Terra, a South Korean gentleman, Kwon, found out that the confidence-boosting statements that were made publicly were done so inaccurately, incorrectly. And that was something that, that the episode sort of highlighted. But it's almost like anyone here can start a cryptocurrency and, and just say that it's worth this, and there's no additional backing, there's no FDIC insurance, there's no security in that investment. So I'm just wondering what your agencies are doing to ensure that we don't continue down that path of unverified currencies?
So I think, let me take this in a couple ways. The first is, you're right, anyone can start their own cryptocurrency and issue it. Now, they're supposed to register with our office and get licensed through DFS if they want to offer it to New Yorkers. They often don't. And, and with Luna Terra, that, that in fact was the case. But, but.
Textbook Ponzi scheme.
It's a, it's a big risk, a lot, well, look, you have a situation where many cryptocurrencies, particularly the ones that are not stablecoins, and I want to separate those for a second because they're very different, are not backed by any sort of underlying real-world value. Now, sometimes they're touted because there's some underlying technology that folks say will, it lead to vast adoption of that particular technology, and therefore, the coin will become scarce, because people will want it to serve whatever the purpose is, and therefore it has value. But that's very different from if that company said, I have a technology, and I'm going to issue stock in my company. You would have an ownership stake in that company. You have no ownership stake in the technology if you buy that coin. You have no ownership stake in the company. You have no right to the profits and the cash flow of that company. That company has no fiduciary obligation to you as a shareholder, the way it would be if you owned equity in that company. You merely own this coin, which, which you speculate may increase in value, because someone else will deem it to be valuable somewhere down the line.
But then how they allowed to trade publicly?
So, Assemblymember, if I, if I can answer, in New York, they can't. So with respect to Terra and Luna, if any DFS registered, DFS licensed entity wanted to list those tokens, they would either have to be on the New York DFS green list, they would have to come to New York DFS and say, hey, I want to list the Peter coin, if it's a Peter coin. Or they would have to have an approved coin listing framework that goes through DFS. That coin listing framework requires reviews for technical design, operational risk, anti-money laundering, and, and a myriad of other things. In practice, New Yorkers did not have exposure to Terra or Luna, because our entities did, we, as DFS, did not green-list Terra or Luna, or Celsius's token, or did license Celsius to act as a legal entity.
But I guess my question, though, Mr. Martin, though, because I, you all are both answering it, but then you're not getting to the core of it. And what I'm, what I'm saying is, is that this is a risky product in and of itself, Terra Luna, and although they weren't able to be traded or used here, what are we doing to sort of ensure that, yes, we have the processes, you have the green list, you just named those few? But my concern is, is that I can live in New York and still trade elsewhere, what are we doing to sort of let folk know here that this is not something that's approved by DFS? This is not something that's going through any controls or any processes?
Can you go first? So, sure, so just to, to, to be clear, it may, it may be true, and I trust that DFS licensed institutions were not selling Luna Terra to New Yorkers. That's not the information the New York AG has, and I don't want to speak in more detail on that, based on confidential information.
Could you move your mic a little closer?
Sorry, I, I just want to be clear, you know, although Luna Terra may not have been licensed for, or permitted to be sold by New York DFS licensed institutions, that does not mean that New Yorkers were not affected by the collapse of Luna Terra. So let's put that to the side for a moment. This, the, to your point about the inherent riskiness, we do think, I mean, and, and I believe my colleagues at DFS would say the same thing, that stablecoins do need stricter regulations. They have some of their own for those institutions that choose to go in through the front door and, and, and get licensed. But to call Luna Terra, as they did, a stablecoin, in our view, is purely deceptive on its face. Because it wasn't backed in the way anyone commonly would understand a coin to be, to be backed one-to-one. It was backed, it was, it was based on the hope that this algorithm was going to function the way that they promised it was, which no reasonable consumer can really understand or parse. And in practice, it didn't function the way they promised it was going to, and folks were left holding the bag, including New Yorkers in that specific instance.
Right. Thank you. And then, and that, that answers my, the core of my question, so I appreciate you both working towards that. And I also appreciate the work that DFS is doing in setting up these controls, making sure there's regulations, because we don't want our folks trading away their, their life savings, trading away even retirement investments and so on, and insecure items. I have one more question, and this is for the AG's office. So obviously, you all are tied up in a number of lawsuits, litigation around crypto. I'm just wondering what message you guys are looking to send in sort of that litigation?
Our message to, to send is that if, if you're selling to New Yorkers, we're going to hold you accountable for following our laws. Or if you're operating out of New York, we're going to hold you accountable for following our laws. And, you know, we're willing to go find you wherever it is that you are operating, if you're selling to New Yorkers. And we've, we've done that, even if institutions are operating outside of, of the United States. Now, sometimes the orders there are really tough for us to enforce, but we have had some success, even in those instances, in getting companies to say, you know what, it is not worth being under order with you, New York. We will find a way to make sure that we remediate customers and, and stop doing business in New York on a going-forward basis. Again, I prefer not to do that after the fact, and we want to get more people coming in through the front door, and we want to have a tighter perimeter around New Yorkers, so that they're not confronted with the kind of abuses that have led to these losses for folks.
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. A follow-up from our ranker.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, speaking specifically to licensing these folks, I know they, they come to you, and then it's kind of a two-step process. They're all a little bit different in some ways. Can you kind of speak to how you're tailoring that to, to each individual, you know, company that's coming to New York to be licensed, either one of you?
For us, our registration regime is, is pretty straightforward. If you're, it, it's tailored, dependent on whether you're engaged in securities, broker-dealing, or securities, investment advising, or issuance, or, or on the commodity side of things, there's just a, a different set of forms you would fill out to provide your registration, and we review that. And granted, it puts, primarily, registration for us puts the company on our radar screen in a way that allows us to make sure that we're keeping tabs on their compliance with New York law. We don't have the, the, the breadth of a supervisory regime that DFS has as a, as a bank regulator. It's sort of distinct the bank regulatory world and the securities regulatory world. But here, because of the nature of the industry, there's a little bit of a confluence between the two. But predominantly, these companies, if they're engaged in certain behaviors, they're supposed to come register with us. Now, a lot of companies take issue with whether or not they're in the business of, the, in the securities business, or the commodities business, right? And we don't care which one, from our perspective, I mean, we care because we like to be legally precise, but from our perspective, they have to register with us either way. But many companies operating in this industry simply take the position that they're not engaged in either of those things. I think that's somewhat convenient, but we disagree with that perspective. We think they're engaged almost always in one of those two things, and that they need to come and register with us and follow the law. And if they're not, we'll hold them accountable and make sure they pay back New Yorkers.
Yeah, and with respect to DFS, it really depends on what your business model is. You know, if it's crypto only, you can get a bit license, or you can add a money transmission license if you want to touch Fiat or traditional wires, for example. There's also a trust regime organized under the New York State Banking Law that offers somewhat more in the way of fiduciary powers. So, you know, we spend a lot of time, even at the pre-application stage, working with, you know, companies, big and small, to understand what is your business model, how do you tailor it to our requirements, and then how do you put in the appropriate risks and risk controls to address those specific business model kind of characteristics?
So with that being said, you know, would any additional authority be needed, you know, with the General Services Law? What, what would give you the, the more tools that you would need, potentially, as this grows and expands?
As Senator, that's, that's a big question. I can take that back to my team. I think, in general, you know, the New York State Banking Law is quite robust, as is the financial services law. But, you know, with respect to consumer protection, there's always more that we can do, so I can take that back to my team.
And I think my concern is, you know, you have somebody operating in the financial services space, in investments and so forth, and, you know, those folks are heavily regulated, and, and certainly at, at the state and federal level. And you've got kind of these, the folks have taken advantage of the fact that this is new to most people, and that there's, in some cases, they're just not regulated. So we, we have to make sure there's a level playing field, essentially. So, with that being said, what, as this grows and, and changes, what kind of resources are you going to need from, from us, for, you know, to that we can ensure that you are able to be nimble and, and transform as, as these things change?
Yeah, so, so I would say, with respect to some of the most significant risks in this space, of course, anti-money laundering, we've seen a lot of terrorist financing, as recently as yesterday, there was a DOJ action taken against North Korea's Lazarus Group. To that end, we've onboarded a number of different blockchain analytics vendors, as well as additional risk monitoring tools. It takes really trained expertise, both in terms of getting our people in the door, training them, certifying them to use those tools, in a way that we've been very successful. So continuing to hire, continuing to get those technologies for us to have more real-time supervisory awareness, and, and continuing to build, as this space moves very quickly, so having people on the grounds, engaging with industry, and engaging with academia is critical here.
So, and, and, Mr. DeAngelo, as far as, you know, specifically your office, is that you see an expansion into kind of its own, you know, its own department, essentially?
So, I, I wouldn't say an expansion to its own department, in any case, although I always take more resources. But, but what I, and, and on the ultimate question of what specifically we need, I would say, we, we should come back to you with, with, with specifics. And, and we're considering options. And we're considering options at the AG's office, we're in conversations with our partners at DFS about what we think might need to be done to, to close some of the gaps here. I do want to speak to your point, though, on a level playing field and the more heavily regulated traditional financial services space, which I think is really important here, because it's, it's the sort of thing we saw in the, in the subprime mortgage context, right, where you had non-bank lenders come into a marketplace, suddenly they were, they were offering something new that could somehow be done with less risk, didn't need the same level of supervision that, that was, was needed of, of bank lenders. And as it turns out, those promises weren't true. And, and, you know, we, to the extent they were offering some, something new in terms of their ability to, to sort good credit from bad credit, they could have done that with the same regulatory regime, but instead, they were trading on their ability to evade regulation, and that's not the kind of innovation we want. And we want to make sure that's not what we have here either. And so when I see, you know, crypto firms saying, look, give us your crypto and we will lend it out and offer you interest, that sounds a lot like banking to me. And if you're not regulated like, we, we go through a lot of trouble to regulate banks very carefully. I mean, I, I, could you imagine the world where instead of holding your money at Silicon Valley Bank or Signature Bank, where when there was a fallout, ultimately, there was a system in place to protect the, the depositors? Now, maybe that needs to be strengthened, and there's going to be after-action reports to figure out what to do there, but could you imagine the world where those customer deposits were sitting at Celsius, or FTX, or Voyager? And even if they were licensed and had capital standards, right, you, you have to remember, they don't have FDIC insurance, right? There is no orderly liquidation process to manage those companies down. That is a very different world, and this industry promises what they want, what they say, and is that they're innovating the next financial services system. This is going to replace what we have today. Well, if it is going to replace what we have today, we shouldn't throw out the learnings we have from the system we have today, and what works and what's necessary to protect the economy and protect investors.
And to your point, I mean, you know, we saw this, you know, I'm old enough to remember the, the dot com turned into the dot bomb revolution, and all the people that lost their money in those areas. And again, it was a new, you know, brave new world, and yet there were, there weren't, there weren't any guardrails. And as much as I'm a free market capitalist, I'm also aware of the fact that it should be a level playing field. So thank you for being aware of that and for continuing to, you know, to, to make sure that that does occur so that, you know, those folks who follow the rules aren't being penalized for doing so.
Thank you.
Thank you. Since my colleagues have answered, raised questions well, I won't repeat them. My takeaways have been predatory inclusion, and blacks over-invested in cryptocurrency. Those are my takeaways that I'll work at. I want to thank this panel. You did well, and you, no one spoke so fast, or things of that nature. Thank you very much to the panel. We look forward to working with you in the future. Paul, if you can ra, call the next panel.
Cody Carbone, Brian Doherty, Elizabeth Moran.
Always a pleasure. We won't, we won't have you swearing or do any of those things. Let's see. We will go, I'll start with you, Ms. Moran. I'm Moran, we will go to you, Mr. Doherty, and then Mr. Carbone.
Great. Thank you all so much. Thank you, Senator, for inviting me here to speak today. My name is Liz Moran.
Pull the mic a little closer.
Sure. My name is Liz Moran, and I'm the New York Policy Advocate for Earth Justice. Earth Justice is the nation's first and largest national nonprofit environmental law organization. Last year, with the support of some of you here today, the legislature passed, and Governor Hochul signed into law, a two-year moratorium on the issuance of air permits for fossil fuel power plants that house energy-intensive proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining operations. It also has directed the Department of Environmental Conservation to conduct a much-needed environmental review. This was a tremendous victory that occurred in the face of huge industry opposition and spending despite the narrow scope of the proposal that aligns with our climate law mandates. The urgency of addressing this matter cannot be understated. Proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining operations have been resurrecting zombie fossil-fuel-based power plants across the country, including here in New York. These mining activities, specifically proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining, uses enormous amounts of energy to power the computers needed to conduct business. Should this activity expand in New York, it could drastically undermine New York's climate goals established under the Climate Leadership and Community Protection Act. So I'll explain why. Digital currencies require authentication to prevent fraudulent transactions. Proof-of-work is the method that has the most significant energy demands and is one of the earlier methodologies for cryptocurrency used by primarily these days Bitcoin. In proof-of-work authentication, complex mathematical equations are assigned to each transaction, and miners or ASICs, very large mega-computers, compete to solve them. The first one to solve an equation authenticates the transaction and wins the currency for their effort. The equations can only be solved by brute force guesswork, so the person or company with the most computational power wins the currency. So Earth Justice recently released a report called "The Energy Bomb: How Proof-of-Work Cryptocurrency Mining Worsens the Climate Crisis and Harms Communities Now." I'm going to go through some of the findings, and I'll note that my organization, and we co-wrote this with Sierra Club, are not the only ones that found these things. The energy use of proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining is out of this world. If Bitcoin were a country, it would rank in the top 30 countries of energy users worldwide. Today, an estimated 38% of Bitcoin is mined in the U.S., resulting in nearly 30 million tons of excess CO2 emissions in the last year alone. From mid-2021 to 2022, Bitcoin consumed 36 billion kilowatt-hours of electricity. That's as much as all of the electricity consumed in Maine, New Hampshire, Vermont, and Rhode Island put together in that same period. In addition, cryptocurrency mining practices have been raising costs and risks for utilities and their ratepayers. It can stress electric grids and flood communities with noise. The cryptocurrency mining industry already uses half the electricity of the entire global banking sector, and will overtake that sector in two years if current trends continue. Meanwhile, the ratio of Bitcoin's energy consumption to humans who actually have Bitcoin is extremely high. Most mining facilities draw their power from the grid. That means electricity is generated by whatever existing energy is in place in that region, and no grid anywhere in the U.S. is 100% renewable yet. To explain that simply, the more energy demand there is, the greater we're going to have to rely upon fossil fuels at this moment to sustain that. In New York, we're trying to move away from fossil fuel-generated power as rapidly as possible. Proponents have claimed that crypto mining is spurring new renewable development and stabilizing the grid, but clean energy allocated to cryptocurrency mining doesn't actually do anything to decarbonize the grid. And there are few mining operations that are building renewables to even power their own operations, let alone send that power to the grid. Some cryptocurrency mining proponents complain that mining, claim that mining only uses wasted energy from solar or wind overproduction, but mining operations consume energy 24 hours a day, not just when there is excess solar or wind, meaning mining operations would fail to be profitable using only the hours when wasted energy is available. And lastly, proof-of-work crypto mining generates enormous levels of electronic waste. According to one estimate, cryptocurrency mining produces 30,700 tons of e-waste annually. So as I mentioned earlier, we're not the only ones that found these types of things. The White House Office of Science and Technology released a critical analysis this past September. They found that depending on the energy intensity of the technology and the sources of electricity used, the rapid growth of crypto assets could potentially hinder broader efforts to achieve U.S. climate commitments to reach net-zero carbon pollution. And even more recently, The New York Times did a deep dive with their story, "The Real World Costs of the Digital Race for Bitcoin." The rest of their headline goes on, "Bitcoin Mines Cash In on Electricity by Devouring It, Selling It, Even Turning It Off, and They Cause Immense Pollution. In Many Cases, the Public Pays a Price." Their investigation found that, in an investigation of 34 different operations, altogether they consume the same amount of electricity as three, the 3 million households that surround them. Quote, "It's as if another New York City's worth of residences were now drawing on the nation's power supply." The additional power use across the country also causes as much carbon pollution as adding 3.5 million gas-powered cars to America's roads. These environmental impacts should be studied very closely by New York. New York has been a very thoughtful state when it's come to its environmental laws and protections, and that's why the moratorium that was passed is very reasonable. We're only talking, talking about fossil fuel power plants, and the agency that books out our environment is designated with making sure we can meet our climate law mandates, should have the time to conduct that review. I'll also note, Earth Justice is tech-neutral. We are not opposed to cryptocurrency or blockchain. Our concerns specifically lie with proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining. Cryptocurrency can be validated through other methodologies. Ethereum, the second-largest Bitcoin, or cryptocurrency, excuse me, switched to proof-of-stake, another validation method, also this past September, and that curbed their energy consumption by 99.9%. So with that, thank you again so much for the opportunity to testify today.
Thank you. Sir?
Good afternoon, Chairman Sanders, distinguished members of the New York State Senate Banks Committee, and members of the general public, as well as Assemblyman Member Anderson. My name is Brian Doherty, and I'm honored to share my testimony as an expert on digital assets and blockchain technology, and as an advocate for digital transformation. Firstly, I would like to express my appreciation for the important role that this committee in ensuring that our government operates transparently and accountably. I've spent the last two decades working with various enterprise-grade technologies to digitally transform governments and businesses. Eight years ago, I began researching and understanding and applying blockchain technologies to address some of the world's most significant problems. I have since become a certified cryptocurrency investigator, a certified Bitcoin investigator, and serve as a subject matter expert on blockchain-based information security technologies for several organizations, including the Cybersecurity and Information Systems Information Analysis Center, a component of the United States Department of Defense. I'm also the Director of Public Policy for the Bitcoin Association, a nonprofit trade association based in Zug, Switzerland, where I advise policymakers in over 30 countries, including the European Commission and European Parliament. Furthermore, I am the co-founder and chairman of Smart Ledger Solutions, the world's leading blockchain distribution channel. Our company is creating cutting-edge utility applications in key industries such as cybersecurity, ESG, verified CO2 offsets, agritech and agricultural security solutions, as well as others that will be unveiled later this year. My areas of expertise include blockchain information security, enterprise blockchain integration and implementation, cybersecurity as well as commercial blockchain development. Today, I'm here to share my knowledge and experience in these, in application development, or in these areas, and offer insights into how this committee can address the challenges and opportunities presented by cryptocurrencies and blockchain technology. In recent years, I've been an advocate for public policies that acknowledge the potential of blockchain technology beyond cryptocurrencies. There has been a great tendency to conflate the two terms, which has resulted in a limited understanding of blockchain transformation potential and revolutionizing various industries and processes. While cryptocurrencies are often thought as the primary application of blockchain technology, they are only a small part of the many features and capabilities that blockchain technology offers. It is crucial to recognize the broader potential of blockchain technology to fully harness its transformative capabilities in various fields. Investors and speculators often view Bitcoin or other digital currencies as a casino-like space where they can speculate based upon factors like volatility and market price fluctuations. However, this narrow perspective fails to recognize the transformative potential that blockchain technology has beyond crypto. Blockchain is a globally distributed ledger system that stores relevant information, relevant transaction information in blocks, linked sequentially in a chain. While cryptocurrencies offer a never-ending supply of tokens, blockchain has a non-exhaustive list of potential applications, which I'd love for you to ask me about today, which aim to replace in today's legacy infrastructure. It is essential to shift the focus to the true long-term innovation of blockchain technology instead of the false promises made by many proponents of cryptocurrencies. One area where blockchain functionality can make a tremendous impact is information and data integrity. After the SolarWinds data breach and other high-profile cyber attacks, there has been a greater need for technological defenses in both public and private sectors. Our government has been interested in the use of blockchain technology as an immutable ledger for cybersecurity. Conversations have focused on the possibility of wider government blockchain integration, particularly for civilian-facing entities like the Department of Homeland Security, which are seeking threat anomaly and detection capabilities. Similarly, the Department of Defense, through DARPA initiative, is seeking industry solutions to help the U.S. warfighter. Certahash, a blockchain-enhanced cybersecurity platform developed in collaboration with IBM, ensures that, ensures secure data integrity and protection against malicious cyber activities. By leveraging the inherent cryptographic features of blockchain technology, Certahash Sentinel Node provides a tamper-proof, auditable record of critical data, ensuring its integrity and reducing, reducing the risk of data breaches. This blockchain-empowered product can play a pivotal role in modernizing and securing our government's digital infrastructure and ensuring the safety of our nation's most sensitive information. Another significant area that blockchain technology can improve efficiency, transparency, and security is public services. For instance, public transportation systems can benefit from blockchain by offering digital passes and payment solutions that streamline the commuting experience, replace fraud, or reduce fraud, and enable real-time data access for both passengers and transit authorities. Additionally, blockchain can transform voting systems by providing secure, transparent, verifiable digital voting platforms that safeguard the integrity of the democratic process, eliminating voter fraud and ensuring every vote counts. Other areas of public services, such as healthcare and land registry, can also leverage blockchain's distributed ledger technology to securely store and share these critical information, ultimately improving the delivery and reliability of these services. Moreover, there is a growing need for sustainable agricultural practices, and the use of blockchain technology in the agritech context is becoming more evident. Political leaders at the U.S. Department of Agriculture are exploring innovative ways to improve agricultural supply chains, traceability, and food safety. Blockchain technology can enhance transparency and accountability and efficiency in these areas. By utilizing blockchain technology, the USDA can track the entire food production process from farm to table, ensuring better quality control, reducing waste, and additionally, this technology can enable secure data sharing among farmers, retailers, and other stakeholders, resulting in more informed decisions about resource management and sustainable practices. In the fintech sector, blockchain can facilitate vital processes such as identity management, fraud detection, and regulatory compliance while fostering secure information sharing between banks and financial institutions, which encourages collaboration and trust. This increased efficiency and accuracy in clearing and settling securities, derivatives, and other financial instruments will further enforce New York State's position as a leader in the application of trailblazing financial technologies. The integration of blockchain technology presents the opportunity to solidify New York State's standing as a global frontrunner in finance and innovation by streamlining financial processes, cutting operational expenses, and bolstering security for banks and financial institutions. Blockchain can help establish New York as a nexus for blockchain-centric services. In conclusion, blockchain technology offers immense potential for improving In conclusion, blockchain technology offers immense potential for improving various industries beyond the realm of cryptocurrencies. By focusing on the broader applications of this revolutionary technology, we can work together to create a more secure, transparent, and efficient society. As a subject matter expert and a passionate advocate for digital transformation, I’m eager to assist this committee in identifying opportunities and challenges that arise from the implementation of blockchain technology in both public and private sectors.
Thank you very much, Mr. Doherty. Mr. Carbone.
Good afternoon, Chair Sanders, Ranking Member Borello, and distinguished members of the committee. Thank you for inviting me to participate in this important discussion on cryptocurrency. It’s truly a great privilege to be back in upstate New York, my second home, where I did my undergraduate studies at SUNY Cortlandt and received my Juris Doctorate and Master’s in Public Administration at Syracuse University. As well, I’m excited to be back here today in Albany, where I last visited to be sworn in as a member of the New York State Bar. Today, I am honored to provide testimony on behalf of the Chamber of Digital Commerce, where I serve as the lead of our Policy Department. Established in 2014 as the world’s first and largest blockchain trade association, the Chamber’s mission is to promote the acceptance and use of digital assets like cryptocurrencies and blockchain technology. We are supported by a diverse membership that represents the blockchain industry globally, including nearly 200 of the world’s leading startups, software companies, financial institutions, and investment firms. I appreciate the leadership of New York State, Chair Sanders, and the entire committee for holding this hearing today. Education on cryptocurrencies and other innovative technologies is critical to fostering an environment that promotes consumer and investor protection without sacrificing economic and technological growth and competitiveness. It’s no secret to anyone in this room or around the globe that New York is the undisputed leader in finance. Today’s conversation related to cryptocurrencies and financial technology illustrates the desire to preserve that leadership, not only today, but for tomorrow as well. My testimony will be looking towards that future and highlighting the promises and opportunities, both known and unknown, of cryptocurrencies and blockchain technology that are ripe for exploration in New York State. The U.S. must lead on crypto. Cryptocurrencies are helping to usher in a truly global and inclusive economy. These technologies will never supplant the U.S. financial system, but they can support and improve it. This revolution is not only in financial services and banking, but also can be seen in innovations in the agriculture industry, education and healthcare, supply chain, government records, title and asset ownership, digitization and encryption of records, and digital identity. Yet, much of the real-world impact of these technologies is still to be discovered. As the demand for paper money reached a 20-year low most recently, the desire for a digitally-native alternative is here to stay. Despite the many myths associated with these technologies, several key facts remain. The inherent nature of both blockchain and cryptocurrency enables transparency in the market, facilitates transactions while removing the requirement to trust unknown third parties, and ultimately offers economic opportunity to the underserved. Recent market failures and front-page scams have altered the public perception of crypto and derailed the U.S. conversation of creating a sound policy framework for these technologies. The latest policy statements from U.S. regulators reflect a reluctance to accept that cryptocurrencies are here to stay and not a passing trend. Despite the aforementioned market failures, U.S. adoption of cryptocurrencies has steadily grown. Today, nearly one in five American adults have owned cryptocurrencies. There are three main reasons why it is essential that policymakers inform themselves about the opportunities and risks associated with crypto and ensure that the U.S. continues to lead the adoption of these technologies. First is preserving U.S. competitiveness. The U.S. share of blockchain development jobs has consistently dropped year after year in a rapidly-expanding industry as developers and startup businesses seek jurisdictions with clear regulatory and legal requirements. In 2017, the U.S. led all other nations with 40% of blockchain developer roles within its borders. That share has decreased to 29% today and is expected to continue to decrease by an average of 2% annually. This is a burgeoning industry. If current growth rates continue, an anticipated 1 million new open-source software engineering and associated blockchain industry jobs will be created by 2030, but most likely they will not reside in the United States. The second point is protecting U.S. national security. If the U.S. continues to delay creating rules and regulations, the rules will be made for us. Technology that can impact the way we transact should not be shunned but embraced and innovated incessantly. Cryptocurrency innovation should help protect and stabilize the U.S. Dollar’s Reserve Currency status. Moreover, the highest adopters of cryptocurrencies by population are emerging and developing markets. As other countries experiment with crypto to help counter unstable economic conditions, cryptocurrencies can reduce reliance on other countries’ currencies like China’s yuan. The last point is creating wealth opportunity and improving access. We do not purport that crypto assets and blockchain technology alone will solve the broad issue of financial inclusion. However, these technologies have provided another option to increase access and opportunities for wealth creation for those who have faced difficulties accessing traditional financial services. This progress should be embraced and improved upon so that every U.S. citizen has equal financial opportunity. Today, there are roughly 4 million people living in banking deserts in the United States. A banking desert is defined as living in an area where there are no bank branches within a 10-mile radius of the home. That number has steadily increased as community and regional banks close and banking is concentrated in only the large players. The number of FDIC-insured banks has dropped by 50% in the last 20 years. People who live in these banking deserts are out of options for access to traditional financial services and are being left out of the market. Cryptocurrency is one potential solution in providing financial services to the un-or-underbanked population. The additional choice of a trustless foundation of cryptocurrency can help reduce poverty and increase economic opportunity. The Case for Crypto. At its simplest form, cryptocurrency is a digital currency that you can use to buy things or send to other people, just like you would with the U.S. dollar. However, instead of issuance and value being controlled by a bank or government, it’s managed by a network of computers. Now imagine a digital ledger, like a notebook, that records all the transactions of these currencies. This ledger is called a blockchain. Each time people send or receive digital tokens, the information is added to the ledger as a new block. All the computers on the network work together to confirm that the transactions are valid and add the block to the chain. The blockchain is like a digital history book that everyone can see but nobody can change. This makes it extremely secure and completely transparent, which is useful because it ensures that everyone is playing by the rules and that transactions are fair and honest. Cryptocurrency and blockchain technology can make transactions faster, cheaper, and more secure. It is easy to talk about crypto as a nascent technology in the abstract and question its fundamental value, but several use cases that have already benefited consumers and investors illustrate its capability. And I have more of those in my written testimony. In conclusion, I would like to express my deepest gratitude for the opportunity to testify before this distinguished committee on the topic of cryptocurrency. By fostering a deeper understanding of cryptocurrency and its implications, the committee is laying the groundwork for informed decision-making and the development of common sense policies that will serve the best interests of all stakeholders. As we continue to explore the intricacies of this emerging technology, it is vital that we remain open to discussion and collaboration. The Chamber of Digital Commerce and its membership stand ready to serve as a resource for the committee, offering our expertise and insights to help guide the development of responsible and forward-thinking policies. Together, we can ensure that the potential of cryptocurrency is harnessed effectively and responsibly for the benefit of the people of New York and beyond. Thank you, and I look forward to your questions.
Thank you. I yield to the ranker.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, and thank you all for being here. You know, I want to start off by saying, you know, I agree very much—you might be surprised —with Ms. Moran and her issues with the tremendous amount of energy it takes. My concerns are certainly—also extend to the grid, the infrastructure, and the fact that you’re talking about using a tremendous amount of energy that could essentially rob other important, you know, areas that need and use energy. You know, I represent a heavily manufactured, you know, manufacturing district, and, you know, there’s only so much energy in the grid, and the grid is aging and failing, as we know. So, at the same time, I understand New York wants to be competitive in this space. I’m curious, because you brought up the fact that there are less—far less energy-intensive ways of doing this. I just—if the two of you would be able to speak on that in the alternate—because from—as a business owner, you know, if there’s a way to do it with a lot less energy, that’s a lot more savings and a lot less cost.
Absolutely. So I think there’s a grand misunderstanding about the actual energy consumption of bitcoin, more so of the competing protocols of bitcoin. Many people refer to the Cambridge Analytica—uh, Cambridge University Index, Bitcoin Index, Energy Index, or the DigiEconomist Index, which, you know, equate to how much BTC bitcoin that most people are trading as a cryptocurrency, how much energy it’s utilizing. The reality is bitcoin BTC, which has a 1-megabit block every 10 minutes, which collects data, right, is limited to how much data it can actually use, so it does not scale. So it actually does seven transactions per second. If we were all to do email—to share email—with a technology that does seven transactions per second, none of us would ever receive that email. The reality is Satoshi Nakamoto said that bitcoin could scale beyond the likes of Visa from day one. Well, what hasn’t happened is there was that 1-megabit limit that was put on the block size early in the network history to prevent spamming of the network and allow the infrastructure to grow. This has not been removed by BTC, which is the prominent bitcoin, you know, tradable asset, but there’s a confusion about what bitcoin was originally. Bit refers to data, coin, finance. Obviously, today, a lot of people are just speaking about the coin aspect, but bitcoin is the fusion of data and finance, where if you remove that 1-megabit limit and have an unbounded block size every 10 minutes, now you’re able to actually have—from BTC, which is about 1,200 kilograms of CO2 per transaction, which is absolutely ridiculous, but down to other competing protocols that use proof-of-work, scalable proof-of-work like BSV, that does less than 2 kilograms of CO2 per transaction, even today. And that’s because of the unbounded amount of transactions that can be included into a block, meaning if a plane was going from New York to Miami and you only had 300 seats, that’s all you’re going to fit in there. It’s going to take the same amount of energy as you want. But if you’re going to take that same plane and you could fit as many people as you wanted in there comfortably, right, safely—
Try that.
—that same carbon footprint for each person starts to go down. Bitcoin was actually a technology—for the first time in history—where the more people utilize a scalable proof-of-work protocol, the actual footprint goes down compared to any technology on the planet. And the other thing I would add to that is, you know, more and more people are just focused on the crypto casino tradable asset, but this technology actually has broader implications. As I mentioned about cybersecurity, you know, the current detection time of a data breach in the globe is 221 days. It’s just unacceptable, right? If you’re able to utilize blockchain in a scalable proof-of-work, which almost every researcher on the planet agrees is the most information-secure technology that has ever existed, but you’re able to do that on a scalable, global way, now you can provide something that actually provides detection instantly. And this tool exists. We built it recently with IBM called Certahash. So now think of the impact that has on not just the fintech or financial sector, because I would argue that going to tell Visa, “Hey, you’re spending a lot of money on securing your customers’ transactions. We need you to move to something that’s less secure, right, because it’s more sustainable.” The reality is, they would never do that because there’d be a hard—you know, obviously there would be a lot of data breaches and cyber attacks. And I would argue that anything worth protecting, especially as we move into this extreme data era where there’s a proliferation of smart devices, IoT, drones, AI, and everything else that blockchain provides the data integrity for, that there’s no shortage of usage of this technology to provide where the transactions are actually going to be lower than what the legacy footprint is today. And as technology grows, what we’ll see is that displacement of legacy technology for more efficient blockchain-empowered technology that also empowers other emerging technologies.
So obviously, technology continues to advance, so you’re basically saying we’ll get to a critical mass, if you will, to improve the efficiency of this?
I would say that we’re there today. So again, given the example of BTC bitcoin, which, again, most people are speaking more about rather than some of these other competing proof-of-work protocols like BSV, you know, we’re there today. That does about seven transactions per second. Ethereum, right, does about 14 transactions per second, and even when they moved over to the merge—to proof-of-stake, it actually didn’t provide any lower fees for the volatile fees that people are paying for transactions, and it really didn’t provide anything for the scaling of that technology, which, again, only does about 14 transactions per second. Visa, on an average day, does about 25,000 to 30,000 transactions per second, and the holidays about 70,000. The BSV blockchain, which is a proof-of-work-based blockchain, does over 100,000 transactions per second today. So I would argue that our CO2 footprint compared to, say, BTC is well under 2 kilograms of CO2 per transaction and going downward. And this was a study done by M&amp;P, the fifth-largest CPA in Canada. They actually did a study on the competing protocols of bitcoin, and which one not only just represented what the actual white paper was implemented and discussed, but also which one is the most efficient. And I would say moving to something that is a less-secure technology is trading security for a false sense of sustainability.
And one additional point to your initial question on the grid. A bitcoin mining facility looks a lot like a data center that Amazon or Walmart uses. The only difference is that bitcoin miners have interruptibility, which they can turn off at a second’s notice. So when there is too much strain or pressure on the grid, they can turn off to make sure that all of the grid’s resources are going to people’s homes to make sure that they warm and keep the lights on. So that is just one important distinction, I would say, of bitcoin miners. They can turn off at any point when the grid is—has too much stress on it.
Ms. Moran, would you like any—I know you’ve made some notes. Is there anything you’d like to add to that?
Yeah, I think a couple of things have been conflated in those responses. So, one thing I’d like to note is some real-world examples of the energy use that we have seen through proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining here in New York. I’ll start with one example. In Plattsburgh, there were mining operations that plugged directly into the grid. And I’ll note, most of the operations do plug directly into the grid, so like a data mining center. But other operations have actually chosen to house themselves in power plants, like the facility in the Finger Lakes, the Greenwich Plant, which is a gas plant. They’re so energy-intensive, that’s why they actually need whole power plants in some cases, is to keep the computers running on a 24/7 basis largely, to compete, to validate the coins, because that’s how proof-of-work works. They have to authenticate the coins by trying to solve these algorithms through the ASICs. And the ASICs, when they’re running that many—in some cases, it’s thousands of computers in one operation—it consumes a lot of energy. So taking Greenwich as one example, Greenwich is projecting a cumulative total of 952,958 tons of CO2 equivalent each year. These levels of emissions, if continued, would result in CO2e emissions of over 8.5 million metric tons between 2022 and 2030. So this operation is primarily powering the crypto-mining facility. It is not primarily powering the grid. In Plattsburgh, as I mentioned earlier, these were facilities that were plugged directly into the grid. And what that—what happened there was utility bills started to go up. Plattsburgh benefits from a lot of hydropower, and that cheaper renewable source started getting used up, so other plants—gas plants—were coming online. That’s more expensive. So utility bills started to go up, people were starting to get concerned about their bills, and that led to local action in Plattsburgh, where they changed their zoning to prevent these operations from coming into town. And we’re seeing similar things occur across the country. So I will also note regarding the safety and security of other systems—I can’t call myself an expert in that—but Ethereum is the second-largest cryptocurrency and actually is behind a lot of the other uses of blockchain that you’ve heard about today, including smart contracts. Proof-of-stake validation methods seem to be used pretty widely for a lot of uses within cryptocurrency and outside of cryptocurrency.
Thank you, and I’m going to yield my time now, but I appreciate the engagement and the information. Thank you so much.
Assemblymember Anderson.
Thank you so much, Chair, and thank you to the panel who presented today. I had one question for Ms. Moran. So—and we saw this last year when we were doing policy that interacted with the environmental piece as well as crypto. So my question is, in your opinion, in your official capacity, what does climate justice policy look like as it interacts with the relationship with crypto mining? Obviously, we know that there’s issues with proof-of-work, there’s issues with proof-of-stake, so just wondering what policy solutions can be, you know, used on the state level?
Yeah, so I would absolutely refer folks to the white paper that Earth Justice released. We issue a number of ways that regulatory entities can look into energy consumption from proof-of-work cryptocurrency. from proof-of-work cryptocurrency mining. You know, part of the reason we were concerned about the energy consumption of the industry was for environmental justice.
Pull your mic a little closer.
Sure, thank you. Was because of environmental justice impacts, be it operations that are housed directly in fossil fuel power plants, which are often cited in low-income or minority-majority communities, but we were also concerned because of communities in New York City. So, New York City needs more renewable energy to power its operation, that's one of the big projects right now. We're concerned that if more energy is consumed across the state, it'll make it harder to get renewable energy sources downstream into New York City. And New York City is known for having some pretty dirty peaker plants. I would absolutely recommend reaching out to the New York City Environmental Justice Alliance to talk more about those specific issues. So, you know, one example of the many that the state could look into is requiring the industry to recycle waste heat. There's a lot of waste heat.
Say that again, waste?
Waste heat. So there's a lot of waste.
Heat?
Yeah.
Oh, heat, like hot and cold?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. The computers can get very hot, so that could be one way to help deal with the energy But that's just one of many recommendations that we've included in our report, and I'd be happy to follow up with you.
Definitely. Pick your brain more some other time. So I thank you, Earth Justice, and I'll kick it back over to the Chair.
Would you be kind enough to make sure that your report goes to everyone up here?
Yes, absolutely.
In the near future. Gentlemen, Ms. Moran, Moran has come up with a very, almost damning picture of the industry as it currently stands, as it currently stands. What are the best practices that could help us deal with this and get away from any wasteful practices?
So, I think we have to think about what it is we're actually talking about. If we're talking about emerging technologies, innovation, right, something that's next-generation, it probably should do something more than what the legacy technology component offers, right? So, if we're talking about a digital asset, but yet the fees are so volatile that somebody may not be able to send that asset, because it might cost them $70 on Ethereum, they're probably not going to use it. And if it's not able to scale and have an impact on, you know, constituents or humanity in general, then why are we actually spending any energy on it whatsoever? Everything in this planet, you know, as far as energy consumption is viewed through the idea of throughput, whether it's your, you know, phone, whether it's your, you know, dryer at home, has an energy star rating, right? And so, if we're really looking and judging these technologies, we need to not do it through an economic model that's faulted, based upon what economics the miners are receiving back. Because I would argue that the majority of proof-of-work mining that's being done for Bitcoin BTC is speculative. They're only fishing for a subsidy. The reality is, we did nothing for the next two years. What happens is a halving comes, where the subsidy is reduced by half. I would argue that unless the fees overtake the actual subsidy, there is no business here, and in two years, all of this will be for naught, as far as discussing this type of technology, because it's not going to have any real-world implications. But that's why it's key that we focus on the scaling of these technologies. Again, if it's only doing 14 transactions per second, volatile fees, they're actually telling you it's digital gold, and telling you to hold on to it and use PayPal, use your Visa, use your MasterCard, then what is the digital asset or innovation that we're talking about? If you're able to send a transaction, and I would argue, $100 from me to you is not, you know, even digitally, is not very innovative. Being able to send one penny for 1/5,000 of a penny and add data to that, whether that's ESG data. Now, we work with a, you know, a group of Virginia farms. I'd love to work in New York, but hemp doesn't grow that great here. But hemp has this incredible ability to sequester carbon. Well, we work with six different Virginia farms using IoT devices, sensors, and drones to measure 22 different data points, and putting and storing that information on-chain for 1/5,000 of a kilobyte. Now, we're able to actually authenticate the carbon sequestration of a, say, of a token, right? Of saying, "We're gonna provide carbon credits." Well, today's carbon credits, as we just saw last month, you know, one of the largest carbon credit providers, was charged with fraudulently providing fake credits. Well, how can we authenticate the actual carbon sequestration of a token? Well, here's a perfect ability to utilize blockchain technology that allows you to infuse this data permanently, in perpetuity, so that way it can be shared across the value chain. Those companies can remove their data silos, because it's a much more secure infrastructure. And I would relate blockchain, not so much as a financial, you know, digital asset, but more so like TCP IP and the Internet, the Internet Protocol. And really, what it provides is two things. One, it removes the heavy reliance on trusted third parties, which removes the amount of cyber breaches that we're going to, you know, have in the future. And then the very second thing is it provides a native payment mechanism that doesn't exist on the Internet, which also allows us to help those underserved communities that, you know, currently you couldn't sell anything on the Internet for less than a dollar or two per product cost, because that's what your costs are for financial transactions to do that business. And so, if we're actually looking at this technology, we need to look at the one that scales, one that actually provides an impact to humanity. Again, that one cybersecurity application that I referred to, which mitigates the actual detection time of a network breach from 221 days to instant, it also prevents, here in the US, any breach that goes beyond 30 days, there's a $9 million price tag for that. What does that do for a company's bottom line to be able to protect? And I would argue, if the President, if the Governor Huchel was walking down the street, you are spending extreme amount of energy to protect something valuable, right? And if you're talking about we're moving into this information age with extreme data, where we're pulling data in from smartwatches and everything else, then we wanna make sure not only is that data secure for that person, but if there is ability for that person to monetize it, whether, rather than becoming the product, then we should empower them, because it's the data that they've created.
How would you answer that question, Mr. Kobon?
I would like to say ditto. I think that was very well said. And I'll just be brief, because I'm not a mining expert by any means, but I know that Bitcoin mining and proof-of-work is expediting the transition to renewable energies, and that 60%, nearly 60% of the energy used by Bitcoin miners today in America are from renewable sources. Wind, solar, hydro, a lot of those renewable sources that otherwise would not be used and be wasted. I know Bitcoin miners as well are taking over peaker plants, where there is flaring, and making sure that energy is being used and not just wasted and put out into the environment. So, I think everything on the security side was extremely well said, and I think that if we're looking at regulations of Bitcoin miners, it is, we should be thoughtful that we are still in the adolescence, I think, as Assemblymember Vanel said. This technology is only several years old. And so, as these companies are growing and maturing, they are still learning, and it seems to be that the overall consensus from Bitcoin miners in the United States has been to move towards renewable energies and clean solutions. And I think we're seeing that, and I think we'll likely see that even further down the line.
I want to take this moment to call upon the Governor. We have a study of cryptocurrency, a bill that was passed by both Houses, and it seems that if ever there was a moment to study this, that moment, we should do that now. It has nothing to do with the moratorium, we should study to see where are we. I want to thank this panel, and thank you very much, and we will call the next panel.
Hey, would Chris Grimm, Natalie Papas, please come to the table?
Even as they walk up, we're going to switch it up a little. We have spoken basically on crypto. Now, let's speak a little on fintechs. Let's speak of what's going on with fintech, what is, what's going on, et cetera. I started this way before, I will start this way now, so that makes you the first Ms. Grimm, as all of you get comfortable. Ms. Grimm.
Good af, oh, yes, good afternoon. I'd like to thank you, Senator Sanders, and the rest of the committee for inviting us here to speak today. My name is Natalie Papas, and I am the Assistant General Counsel for a company called Rapid Finance. However, today, I'm here on behalf of the Small Business Finance Association, the SBFA, which is a leading trade association for alternative finance providers. These types of providers offer small-business loans, small-business lines of credit, as well as sales-based financing products. Thank you. So we're here to talk today about your bill that you proposed, Senate Bill 1450, regarding licensure of small-business financing products, as well as the brokers that might assist these small businesses with finance, with these types of products. The SBFA shares your goal, shares your common goal, in order to license these entities, so that the state of New York is able to understand not only the companies that are operating in New York, as well as the types of products that are being offered here. It's important in order to license or to propose legislation with, after understanding who is actually in the industry and what the goals are. Our initial goal, I know we've worked with you in the past, Senator Sanders, regarding licensing and other bills regarding the fintech or the commercial financing industry, and we believe that, you know, implementing licensure, bringing everybody that's in the space together is a good, a good first step for this. We know that we had proposed trying to do licensure before the small, the Commercial Financing Disclosure Bill, just so that we could, you, the state could get a better understanding of what's going on. Unfortunately, it was reversed, so the small-business commercial disclosure, or the commercial financing bill is currently in place, and the regulations go into effect shortly. However, the regulations do not come with any licensure of the providers of this commercial financing, nor for the brokers. So we do think that it is important to also have some type of licensing regime, so that these providers are licensed, and the state is able to further work and, you know, build, to build this licensing out, so that they know who's here. While we are very in support of this licensure, we think the bill has a couple of technical amendments that we'd love to work with you in the future on, to try to make it so that it, it makes sense, it's in line with maybe some of the definitions that are in the commercial disclosures and regulations, just so everything's more cohesive. But like I said, you know, we are here to work with you, and we are happy to be any assistance and resources, so I want to thank you today.
Thank you. Madam Holmes.
Good afternoon. Am I on? Yes. Good afternoon. My name is Amy Carpenter-Holmes, I am a Deputy.
Pull it closer.
A little closer. Okay. Is that better?
Yes.
Okay. My name is Amy Carpenter-Holmes, I am a Deputy General Counsel at Capitis. Thank you very much for having me here today to testify regarding the regulatory framework for financial technology or fintech companies. I will be addressing the regulatory framework for fintechs that provide financing to small businesses, or who act as brokers on behalf of small businesses in those transactions. Small businesses, as you know, are a backbone of the economy of the United States, and here in the state of New York, and I'd like to thank you and the entire committee for bringing attention to these important issues. Just as some background, Capitis is a financial technology company founded in New York City in 2006, that provides capital to small businesses through technology-enabled underwriting. Capitis has provided billions in financing to small businesses since exception, inception, excuse me, increasing small businesses' access to capital. In New York, Capitis enters into contracts with small businesses, where it purchases a percentage of a small business's future income in exchange for a fixed payment to the business. Unlike loans provided by many traditional banks, Capitis' financing options allow small businesses to use the financing for any purpose. The financing options are extended faster and more efficiently, do not require personal collateral from the owner of the business, and importantly, adjust the small business's repayment obligations either automatically or upon request if the small business experiences fluctuations in its income. Capitis supports sensible regulation to ensure that small businesses are not taken advantage of by bad actors. Any regulation should allow companies like Capitis to offer small businesses the products and the financing necessary to run their businesses, and any such regulation should seek to create a leveled regulatory playing field, regardless of the product offered. This is why Capitis has worked with you, Senator Sanders, to support a bill that would license providers and brokers of financing to small businesses. This was, in fact, the approach taken in California, where Capitis has been licensed since 2008. The intent of this bill was and remains to ensure that all entities providing or brokering financing to small businesses would have to make certain basic criteria, such as the absence of a criminal background, and would have to register with the Department of Financial Services. This is important, so that DFS can gain an accurate and complete understanding of the non-bank commercial finance market. In Capitis's opinion, it is difficult, if not impossible, for DFS to regulate an unknown population of entities. Without some type of licensure or registration program, it is unclear how DFS would even know who is providing commercial financing in New York, or brokering those transactions in New York, something that remains critical as DFS moves to enforce the regulations, implementing the Small Business Finance Disclosure Statute, sponsored by Senator Thomas in 2020. The reason this is important is because unfortunately, there are scrupulous entities that are taking advantage of small businesses by, for example, charging unnecessary and inappropriate fees, misleading small businesses as the term, as to the terms of the products they offer, or engaging in bait and switch tactics. Capitis initially supported a licensure rather than a disclosure bill, because Capitis believed that licensure was the first step to protecting these small businesses. There are two main reasons for this. First, licensure protects small businesses on the front end, by ensuring that entities must meet certain basic criteria before being able to offer or broker financing to small businesses. Small businesses are then assured that they are only interacting with companies that have met these basic requirements. Second, it ensures that DFS knows who is providing or brokering financing to small businesses. This is essential to provide proper supervision, and is difficult for DFS to supervise entities it does not know exist. Rather than passing a licensure bill, however, New York passed a disclosure bill. Capitis still believes that licensure would have made more sense as a first step, but Capitis has provided multiple comments to DFS in an effort to improve the regulations meant to implement the disclosure bill. And Capitis still believes that legislation is needed to identify the providers and brokers who are required to make the disclosures DFS is implementing, whether under your pending legislation or in some other form. Again, the goal is to ensure that the people providing financing to small businesses and acting as brokers in such transactions meet certain basic criteria, and are known to the DFS, so these entities can be appropriately supervised, and so that bad actors can be weeded out. Thank you very much for the invitation to speak here today. Capitis continues to support you and your work, and is happy to work with you and the committee to support efforts at sensible regulation.
Thank you. Last but never least, sir.
Thank you. Mr. Chair, thank you for inviting me to testify today. My name is Christopher Grimm, and I am here on behalf of the Innovative Lending Platform Association. ILPA members provide New York businesses with hundreds of millions of dollars annually in capital to invest in their business, purchase inventory, hire additional hands or upgrade equipment, and they do it with innovative underwriting and in as little as 24 hours. In 2016, ILPA created the first model disclosure tool, SmartBox, with comprehensive pricing metrics and key financing terms presented in plain, easy-to-understand language. We were also the prime proponents of New York's gold standard commercial finance disclosure law, which has been introduced and copied by a number of states since it passed here. Following the Great Recession, small-business capital all but disappeared. Only businesses with great risk profiles, significant collateral, and existing bank relationships had access to capital. ILPA members, other fintechs, and community-development financial institutions are ILPA members, other fintechs, and community development financial institutions are filling that gap. In fact, a recent study by the Federal Reserve concluded fintechs lenders have a potential to create a more inclusive financial system, allowing small businesses that were less likely to receive credit through traditional lenders to access credit and do so at a lower cost. But providing small businesses with capital is increasingly challenging. Inflation and rising interest rates have made credit more costly. Mortgage rates are now twice as high as they were just a few years ago. It's against this backdrop that we have some concerns with Senate Bill 1450 and the proposal for licensing commercial finance providers. First, we are concerned that this is pursuing a one-size-fits-all approach based on an experience regulating consumer financing. Commercial financing is a significantly different market with different products than consumer financing. They have different uses and evaluating the risk of a small business is incredibly complex. Unlike consumer credit, where credit scores are a standard risk indicator, commercial financing requires a more comprehensive risk evaluation to capture factors that are unique to small businesses. A deadly pandemic, a new competitor opening down the street, changing suppliers, increased costs from inflation and labor issues can all seriously impact a small business's bottom line, and those are all impossible to predict. That's why 65% of businesses fail during their first 10 years and only 25% make it to 15 years or more. Second, while 50 different state licensure requirements may appear relatively manageable on its face, the truth is that licensing can be extraordinarily burdensome and costly and can cause several unintended problems. For example, Nevada has an extraordinarily complex licensing structure. They're currently considering a bill to change that that no one understands. Watching the hearing was interesting to say the least. As a result, several of our members do not currently operate in Nevada and provide credit to small businesses. However, we understand and appreciate that regulators need to know who's operating in their state to enforce existing laws, including the Commercial Finance Disclosure Law. We believe a registration or a requirement to notify the regulator, DFS, of operations in the state through the nationwide multi-state licensing system would provide regulators with that needed information to enforce the law without creating significant compliance burdens for providers. Also, I understand the focus of this hearing is on licensing. I want to take this opportunity to, to make this committee aware that the state's current low commercial usury rate caps are making it incredibly difficult to provide financing to small businesses. These caps don't consider several factors, including the recent inflation that I mentioned and rising interest rates. Just last week, the President and CEO of the National Association of Federally Insured Credit Unions wrote that the 18% cap that's imposed on credit unions is forcing credit unions to reduce services to consumers and small businesses in their communities. An ILPA member recently reported that New York, for the first time, has fallen from fourth in the state to fifth in origination, fourth in the country to fifth in origination volume, below Illinois, a state with 2/3 of New York's population, but no usury cap for commercial financing. We hope that as part of this discussion on regulating fintech, the legislature will consider raising or eliminating the current usury cap on commercial financing, aligning with 39 other states that don't impose these arbitrary caps on commercial lending, including California and Illinois, just didn't even do. By keeping the current status in place, the state will continue to severely restrict access to credit for small businesses and choke off economic development. Thank you, and I'm happy to answer any questions.
Thank you. Thank you all. I have several questions and I'm glad I don't have to yield to anyone. I'll yield to myself. Let me start with some, some, some basic facts that the, the MWBE community, minority women-owned business enterprises, have found it very difficult to use, to be fully funded by traditional banks. And they have found it easier to use fintechs, which has led to the rise of fintechs in some quarters. But traditional banks have to use a CRA. They have a Community Reinvestment Act that they have to abide by. Why don't, why doesn't the fintechs create one and use it themselves?
I thought lost her.
Fool for thought, if need be.
I think, I think that the advantage of fintechs, particularly, I can speak on behalf of Capitis, is the, the process of obtaining financing is, is in fact much easier because it is all, all online, is all the phone. There's no need to go to a specific bank. In the past panel, there was discussion of a bank, bank deserts, deserts where there are no opportunities for people to have traditional commercial opportunities. Whereas I think we do provide that because you really just need a phone or a computer to obtain that financing, which I do think it makes it much more accessible. And we obviously are doing our very best to make our products available and accessible to everyone across all populations, across all locations, et cetera. And I do think the mechanism by which people contact us to obtain financing actually is very helpful in that, in that regard. And the only additional thing that I will say is I think, as I'm sure you're aware, 1071 is, is now, has been, has been passed and will be in the process of being implemented. And I think that will be very instructive in terms of the statistics being gathered under that rule.
Okay. Anyone else?
Sure. I'd just like to add, I'm not as familiar with the specifics of the Community Reinvestment Act as, as some other laws. But as I said earlier in, in my testimony, the credit gap for small businesses exists partly because of the regulatory regime that exists on banks, right? After the Great Recession, credit tightened because banks had to more closely manage their risk profile, right? And a lot of that is because they hold customer deposits. For a non-depository institution, trying to fit that round peg in a square hole, right? Our, our members don't have customer deposits, right? So there's nothing that's at risk of a run, a lot of the things that we heard in the previous panel. So trying to apply a regulatory structure that's dealing with banks and depository institutions doesn't always apply to non-banks.
And then also just, so the way the companies, their members work is, you know, we're here to serve the businesses. If they want to have a call at 6 o'clock in the morning, I know somebody from our company is going to be on the phone with them. You know, we try to work around our, the business, the owners, their time instead of the traditional, you know, 8 to 4 of a bank or something like that. Because my parents have a small business, everybody, you know, you know that you're never, the day's never done, so when things come up. So we try to be accommodating for this, for those businesses. And so, you know, by being, you know, we're a phone call away or a text away or an email away. So it's, you know, we're trying to be at the service of, you know, those businesses to be at their disposal, at their time, what works best for them, instead of being like, well, you need to come here at this time because this is when we're here. So we're trying to be more accommodating across the board because we know everybody's day's different, everybody's schedule's different, and things come up. So that is another way that our companies are able to help small businesses is being on their schedule, whether them being on ours or a traditional bank or something like that.
Well, Podol, can I encourage all of you to become aware, more aware of CRA, Community Reinvestment Act? I have recently, the credit unions have played, are now playing a larger role in New York State. And I have, I'm working with them to create a CRA for credit unions. And if the fintechs are going to have a larger role in New York, I would encourage you to look at CRA and what, what does it mean? But I will take you to, Mr. Grimm, you spoke, you alluded perhaps to the PPP loans that the fintechs were able to, to give out. One of the studies that came out from that period was that in terms of the MWBE community, minority and women-owned business community, that we found two different things. First, that the fintechs were more effective in giving money to the MWBE community than traditional banks. But the Federal Reserve also found that the satisfaction of the MWBE community was not very high, and they would have preferred a traditional bank at the, at the end. Very interesting. I, I, I encourage you to look at it. You also spoke of the small cap, the 18% that New York State has. And I suspect that you would have preferred us to use the, the military model that is out there. The US military allows, if my memory serves me correct, up to 36% or something of that nature. I, I've, I'm, I'm certainly hearing the industry and I'm mulling it over and trying to figure out what to do there. Ms. Holmes, you, you guys have been around since 2006. Congratulations.
Thank you very much.
That's, in this day and age, that's something. Were you, I don't believe the answer is yes, but were you, was your firm ever involved in COJ's Certificate of Judgments or any, any of those things?
I, I have not been there since 2005. But certainly as long as I have been there, and to my knowledge, the answer is that is no. And we certainly do not do that now.
Yes, we're still looking into that matter to see what we can, even at this late date, do about these things. So I did hear you speak of yes, disclosure is a good thing. And in addition to disclosure, licensing makes the most sense. People having a license makes the most sense. I obviously agree with you, if I could say so myself. In fact, I did. Ms. Pappas, you were speaking of how to deal with the bad players, how there are bad actors out here. And we absolutely could use help in, from all of you, and any ideas that you have that can help weed out this, this new and emerging industry and find ways of getting the bad actors. I have found the industry, I, I don't go to the industry as an automatic opposition. I go with an open mind saying, let's see if you will give us ways. How do you believe we should find these bad players? You may know the inside situation far better than we. In time, we will learn it, but you, you probably know it already. Are there any practices, Ms. Pappas, that we have missed so far in catching up with the bad, bad actors?
So like I said, you know, I think licensure is one thing because that way they're on the, they're on the state's radar. In California, some of our members, my, our, my particular company work for Rapid Finance, we are licensed in California. They require annual, or audits. So there, there are ways that, you know, by licensing that you are able to then look into certain things, to see these practices, ask additional questions. There are some other potential ways out there. I know we had, there had been some comment letters or back and forths specifically with certain companies, you know, with DFS regarding, you know, potential additional additions to the regulations that we think that, you know, would bring light to small businesses, you know, potential fees that are being charged that might not be disclosed, you know, certain other items that are out there that the, you know, that these small businesses might not know are there, that might be being charged separately potentially by a broker or something like that. So by really just trying to see who's playing, who's participating, what's being charged outside of the provider, you know, thus providing the commercial financing, I think that's definitely a step in the right direction. Because once you understand potentially the whole picture, when everybody's involved and what's specifically going on, you can say, oh, well, this seems like a problem. I might have, you know, this might not be something the small business knows is happening. Maybe we could go and, you know, have some type of disclosure there or a requirement there for, you know, other aspects of the industry.
To your right is Paul Alexander from my office. Can I encourage the three of you? If you can think of any ways that we can use to get the bad actors out of the industry, out from amongst you, please share it with him so that we can continue.
Be more than happy to.
Thank you. And I want to thank all of you for appearing today. I trust it was useful to you because it certainly was useful to us. Thank you very much. And you can call the next panel.
Thank you, Senator.
Thank you for your time.
More than welcome. Well, Ms. Fisher, you picked a bad panel because you're sitting with Phil Goldfetter and I have to give him a hard time. So I guess it will-
You're in big trouble.
It will be shared with you too. Good to see you. I almost said assemblyman. I, I still could. I still can.
Nice to see you, sir.
It's a pleasure. Ms. Fisher, Mr. Bell, a pleasure. Let's see, where do you, this is such a tough one. I think I'm going to have Consumer Report go last. That way you're, whatever they say that needs further clarification. Ms. Fisher, I promised that I would focus on you, and I shall. Ms. Fisher, good to see you. You can speak first.
Thank you, Senator Sanders, and thank you for the opportunity to be part of this important hearing on fintech. My name is Kate Fisher. I'm a partner with a law firm, Hudson Cook, and I'm here today representing the Revenue-Based Finance Coalition, a coalition of responsible providers of financing to small and medium-sized businesses nationwide. Revenue-based financing is fair, flexible, and fast. Revenue-based financing is able to serve businesses where traditional banks cannot. Our financing tends to be between $5,000 and $100,000. Our underwriting focuses on business revenue instead of traditional factors such as assets and credit scores. This expands access to capital for minority and women-owned businesses. A recent study conducted by an NYU Stern Business School professor found that fintechs were able to reach substantially more black-owned businesses than traditional banks were during the PPP program. One reason the study explores is that fintechs were able to provide smaller dollar financing, which tends to serve smaller minority-owned businesses. And our focus on revenue instead of assets aligns our interests with our customers. We do well only when our customers do well. Revenue-based financing is flexible because our business customers pay according to a percentage of their revenue. In a typical scenario, a small business may need $30,000 to expand. The business could quickly access that $30,000 in exchange for the promise to pay 10% of its future revenue plus, until the business has repaid that $30,000 plus a fee. There's no interest accruing each day, and there are no fixed daily, weekly, or monthly payments. The business simply promises to deliver that 10% of each day's revenue up to the total payment obligation. What happens if the revenue drops? The business's payment obligation drops as well. What happens if the business has to temporarily close? Their payment obligation stops completely until the business can reopen. This flexibility provides a kind of economic shock absorber for small businesses. And revenue-based financing is fast. A business can obtain needed funds within 24 to 48 hours. The reason for the speed is that revenue-based financing providers underwrite based on whether the business's future revenue can support the financing amount. There's no requirement that the business owner put up personal collateral and generally no collateral at all, and there is no personal guarantee of repayment. This fast access to capital is a critical economic engine for small businesses. Before I close, I would like to address the issue of licensing for fintechs. We support legislation that keeps out bad actors and sets reasonable guardrails. We also want to protect access to capital for New York's small businesses and avoid overregulation. I have a couple of examples of overregulation from Senate Bill 1450. Senate Bill 1450 would require a provider of small business financing to get advance approval from DFS 40 days before changing an office location. We have member companies located in Utah, California, South Dakota. Should they be required to ask DFS for permission 45 days before they move their office from one location in Sioux Falls or Salt Lake City to another down the street? Another example is that the penalty for failure to obtain a license is very harsh. Senate Bill four fifty states that if a financing provider fails to obtain a license, or even potentially if a broker involved in the transaction was unlicensed, the entire financing transaction is void and uncollectible. This could result in financing providers avoiding New York because the consequence of accidentally missing the fact that a broker was unlicensed is too severe. A better approach would be to impose a fine for failure to obtain a license and make it a really stiff fine, but not make the entire financing obligation void and uncollectible. We would love to work with you to craft legislation that strikes the right balance. And again, thank you for inviting us to participate today.
Thank you. You've done very well. The Honorable Phil Goldfetter.
I'm having a hard time doing this with a straight face.
My friends, Mr. Goldfetter was formerly an employee of mine, a, my star pupil, who, who decided that he wanted to go to a larger world. And so he's no longer on this side, he's now on this side. So it's a very interesting thing that we, we have. Let's hear how well he does.
This side feels different for sure. Well, let me first start by saying thank you. Thank you for allowing me the opportunity to break into the big world of politics more than twenty years ago. And the opportunity which clearly led me here, and so we both did something right. I want to start by saying, and I, before I go to my prepared remarks, that not all fintech is created equal. I think that's the biggest challenge, is that too oftentimes we, we take one aspect of fintech and we quade it across the board, and we say, well, if this aspect did something wrong, then it's all bad and it's all, and it all needs to go away. I think most importantly is we need to recognize that crypto companies are different than payments companies, which are different than lending companies, small business lending companies, different than consumer lending companies, earned wage access, buy now, pay later, and the gamut. And so I think it's, number one, critically important we have hearings like this so we can continue to find ways to educate about the various, not just verticals within fintech, but more importantly, the different companies within those verticals, some that accept and take on a standard and some that don't. As you know, and I had the unique opportunity to serve in the state legislature, and recognizing that it's not about regulation for regulation's sake or bills for bills' sake. It's about crafting the right regulatory structure together with partners in industry who are looking to create access to financial services and access to services for our constituents. So I am now representing, I'm the CEO of the American Fintech Council. The American Fintech Council is the leading industry association representing responsible fintech companies, creating critical access to safe and affordable financial services. AFC and its members deliver for customers by leading and advocating for the next generation of companies at the intersection of technology and financial services with many responsibly lending and providing services right here in New York. We foster innovative, transparent, and responsible products that promote competition, consumer protection, and financial health, inclusion, sound public policy, and equity. AFC is committed to robust industry standards with a focus on consumer protection and regulatory compliance, in addition to advocating for and embracing fair, fair government regulation. AFC members are at the forefront of fostering competition in consumer finance and pioneering better ways to better, pioneering ways to better serve underserved consumer segments and geographies. AFC has publicly supported thirty-six percent rate caps at state and federal levels, which is a key component of our advocacy and of addressing responsible lending. Our members are also lowering the cost of financial transactions, allowing them to help meet demand for high-quality, affordable products. Thank you. AFC supports policymakers, regulators, and other stakeholders on solutions to issues that regulators and others have emphasized throughout public discussions around financial technology oversight. Our members are improving products that help advance consumer financial health and financial capacity. AFC members are interested in providing more innovative products that address consumer demand without compromising on regulatory compliance or consumer protection. And I'm gonna say that again because I think it's critical. AFC members are interested in providing more innovative products that address consumer demand without compromising on regulatory compliance and consumer protection. AFC members are focused on products that are responsible, fair, safe, and want to work and partner with federal and state regulators to scale responsible options in the marketplace. The COVID-19 pandemic has magnified the challenges of ensuring the availability of high-quality financial services and products. Banking deserts and underserved census tracts are proliferating, and in thousands of communities across the country, bank branches are closing at record rates. With the two thousand and eight banking crisis ingrained in the minds of New Yorkers particularly, and with recent events, we are seeing again investor panic and unstable markets indicating a potential banking crisis. The recent collapse of Signature, Silicon Valley, and Silvergate Bank could be a canary in the coal mart for New York banks, particularly those that are uninsured by the FDIC, since those banks are more susceptible to liquidity and solvency crisis. Economic downturns cause everyday New Yorkers to suffer. Their health, health outcomes, state of mind, and quality of life depend on functioning capital markets. Any plan for New York that does not include accessibility and comprehensive financial services for our most vulnerable communities is inadequate and should not be accepted by policymakers. Regulated and responsible fintech companies are poised to lead the future of financial services as we break down the traditional barriers to capital and reach families and businesses traditionally left behind. AFC has long advocated for regulatory modernization that promotes innovation but also holds innovators accountable to being responsible and transparent. We're now at a moment in time where modern and forward-looking regulatory structures can strengthen banks and fintechs that play by the rules and act responsibly.
And with fifteen seconds. Always impressive. Mr. Bell.
Chairman Sanders, members of the committee, thank you so much for the opportunity to testify. I'm Chuck Bowles, Programs Director for Consumer Reports, based in Yonkers, New York. I'm a financial policy advocate in our New York office. I represent our positions here in New York State and other northeastern states. Most of my comments here are really to address fintech rather than crypto, but to summarize, we, at Consumer Reports, we are very much in favor of state oversight and licensing for online lending and for crypto, to the extent that new measures can be developed to provide for that. We also participate here in the coalition called New Yorkers for Responsible Lending, where I co-chair the Consumer and Insurance Working Group. And in that group, we're quite concerned with trying to strengthen the General Business Law three forty-nine, the consumer protection law in New York State, which has not been updated for forty years. So Senator Comrie has a bill to strengthen that law, strengthen the penalties that are in that bill, or in that law. And we think that's one of the best protections we can provide for consumers, is to have a strong general law where consumers who are harmed by unfair deceptive or abusive practices have the ability to protect their rights in court, and our legal services, attorneys around the state can help bring actions on their behalf. We also, we're very much in support of the New York Department of Financial Services proposal a couple years back to expand their licensing of online lenders in particular. Because we, as we look at states around the country, we see a lot of online lending that takes place at extremely high rates. I mean, New York is a non-payday state. There's over twenty states that have tight usury caps that don't authorize really high interest rates for small-dollar consumer loans, and we think that is a really good thing, both at New York's Responsible Lending and Consumer Reports, for protecting New Yorkers and particularly vulnerable communities. By having those tight usury ceilings, we have, we've been able to attract lenders that are willing to lend under those rates. We've empowered credit unions to make affordable, soundly underwritten, small-dollar loans, and we've avoided people getting into the cycle of recurring debt with payday loans, which we see in so many other states that is really devastating, that borrowers can be in debt the entire year long, often forced to borrow money from friends and family to repay these usurious loans of, you know, three hundred, four hundred percent APR, and often declare bankruptcy, you know, and have their credit damaged as a result. So we believe that having those ironclad usury limits is one of the things that's really done the most to protect consumers. And we've seen regulation wax and wane over the years. I put some material in my statement about all the risks that came out during the financial crisis, where many of our groups had warned the Federal Reserve about the risks of predatory lending, predatory mortgage lending, how it was harming vulnerable communities, and the federal regulators basically failed to take action. And so under Down-Frank, we got the creation of the Consumer Financial Protection Bureau. And then here in New York, when the Departments of Banking and Insurance merged, we got a stronger DFS that has a Bureau of Financial Frauds and Consumer Protection. And we think enforcement of our financial laws is a, oversight and enforcement is a joint state-federal responsibility. Right now, there's a lot of attacks that are coming against the CFPB's funding mechanism. There's a Supreme Court case from the Fifth Circuit that's pending that threatens to disrupt their work. They're doing incredibly important work and have really improved the accountability of financial services for consumers. So we, but we do think that the state regulators, like the Attorney General and the DFS, are also essential for filling in gaps and being able to take action if there are any slow points in federal action. So for all those reasons, we favor the licensing of consumer-facing lenders. One example of regulatory arbitrage, which I attached to my statement, is we did a report about these buy-now-pay-later lenders, which, to their credit, the CFPB is doing a lot to investigate and developing some good recommendations for new protections. But the point is that those lenders are not licensed in New York State. They are licensed in California. California has somewhat better data about how they're behaving out there. We've seen a number of problems with stacking of multiple loans by some consumers. There's some concerns about whether sound underwriting is taking place. There are issues with respect to late fees and consumers making returns and, you know, getting credits to their account. So there's lots of different fintech enterprises and startups. I agree, there's tremendous heterogeneity and diversity in the industry, and consumers are well-served by having more, more options and more tools. But I think all of these things do need strong state oversight, and we would support efforts by the DFS and the Attorney General to expand their licensing of online lending, and in particular, the licensing of a crypto exchange. There's a bill in California called AB thirty-nine, which Consumer Reports is supporting as a way of getting more state accountability. And my boss testified in favor of creating a federal regulatory framework for stable coins last week, and I attached her testimony. So we're gonna be working at both levels on this, but we do want to encourage New York State to maintain its vigilance and its oversight, and we do think it's paid very rich rewards. Certainly, we have a long way to go in getting better financial access for underserved communities and consumers of color, and we want to, we want to get on with that work, but let's not, let's not ease up on the oversight. That's basically our point of view.
Mr., Mr. Bell, your magazine, and now online, is held in high regards throughout the nation and especially in New York. One problem that, that was brought up earlier is that credit unions don't lend to businesses, so they may not be the most effective vehicle to aid the business community. How would you address that?
I, I think, I think there are other companies and fintech lenders that can fill some of those gaps, but my concern is that when you have high-cost credit, people, you know, businesses can get in a cycle of debt repayment that they may not be able to handle, and that we really do need to be careful about making sure that the loans are appropriately underwritten and affordably priced. And if we're not getting that from the private market, then there may be a need for additional sources of credit developed by the state through, through other, you know, like Empire State Development or through public banking, other channels. But I, I think we need to be careful because I put in my testimony several examples of businesses that became very overextended on high-cost loans. And, you know, when people are desperate, up in the middle of the night, worrying about their inventory and where the cash is coming from, it's pretty easy to overlook onerous terms, and there have been onerous terms in lots of small-business loans, and we can't just rely on the marketplace to fix that. I think there has to be oversight and some real guardrails to protect the businesses from predatory, predatory activity.
Before I turn to Ms. Fisher, I'm going to ask you one more question, sir. Has Consumer Report taken a position on public banks yet?
We were in support of the Public Banking Bill. I'm gonna be coming back next week to join Community Equity Agenda in support of that. So yes, we do, we do support the New York Public Bank Bill. So thank you for your leadership on that.
Thank you. Ms. Fisher, the issue of, the cap has been raised here. Do you have a position on, on, I think that you spoke of, well, I, I'm not sure if it was you who spoke of the lending cap of New York, New York State. Does the Business Finance Coalition have a position on that?
It wasn't me that spoke about that, and we don't have a position on the New York Usury Cap. But I did, if it's okay, want to comment on your question you've had to the other panel about the Community Reinvestment Act.
I, it was, I assure you it was coming up, but you beat me to the punch. You're a good barrister.
The Community Reinvestment Act has the goal of encouraging banks to provide capital, capital to underserved communities. And it is perhaps cumbersome, and I think we could do something better. For example, in SB fourteen fifty, there's the concept that you've introduced about using some of the licensing fees to provide grants to women and minority-owned businesses. And that's an innovative idea to provide capital to underserved communities and, and an idea that we support, and we look forward to working with you on, on other concepts.
I like it, I like it. Broker versus, and there was a question of who should get in trouble, if you wish, if the broker is unlicensed and you did not want it to be the industry, you felt that it should be simply the broker should bear the burden. Am I phrasing it right?
There is some distinction. So the issue that I brought up is the penalty for having the underlying transaction be void and uncollectible. So for example, New York's criminal usury cap of twenty-five percent, the law in New York is that if a loan exceeds that criminal usury cap, that loan is void and uncollectible. That's an appropriate penalty for violating a law that has significant public protection. In my view, a licensing requirement, although it's important, is more of an administrative issue, right? If, if a loan is otherwise legal, but there is someone in the chain who failed to obtain a license, making the penalty be that the underlying transaction is void and uncollectible is not commensurate with the harm, the public harm. So in my view, it'd be a more appropriate penalty to have a fine assessed, you know, a robust fine, so that there is deterrence for failure to have a license. So I was more focused on the, the gravity of the penalty commensurate with the violation of the law.
It might be a good thing, as you describe it, if the industry is moving in good faith, if they are moving to ensure that the person has a license. If they were taking some action to ensure that the person had a license and they moved in good faith, then later on, if there was a problem. But to just say, no action by the industry, just anyone coming up and saying, I'm licensed, I can, I can go, perhaps there is some, some room for compromise. Perhaps if we can find something that the industry is doing to, to screen out the bad actors again and, and move forward so that at least you would be able to say, hey, we, we, we moved in a good manner, now don't penalize us.
Agree.
Perhaps.
Thank you.
Mr. Goldfetter. Have you considered, have you guys considered public banks yet? Is there an official position?
We do not have an official position. Again, there are studies out of Massachusetts and others that have varying conclusions. We at the American Fintech Council don't have a public position.
Okay. Public banks may end up acting as the, like the Veterans Administration. I am a vet, and I can get a vet loan to buy a home from the Veterans Administration. The Veterans Administration does not, is not in the business of giving money. They don't do that. What they do is guarantee a certain percentage of the What they do is guarantee a certain percentage of the loan, and under those conditions, any worthy financial institution may be the recipient of this. It need not be simply a brick and mortar. The, the attempt by the Veterans Administration is that the vet buys a home, and, and any worthy institution may be the recipient. Consider, consider it may be, if you move on that, I just want 10%.
Senator, I-
My friends, I'm joking. Go ahead.
I would argue, you know, fintech came about as traditional financial institutions exited the community in what we call de-risked post-2008 crisis. Traditional financial institutions sort of stepped away, and that's kind of where fintech began. Members of ours, like Lending Club and Prosper, sort of filled the void in consumer, but I want to be clear, as I've said before, responsible fintech companies who believe in regulatory structure, many of whom partner with community banks to provide access to credit. The idea that we have to incentivize banks to make loans to people who need them is astonishing in today's day and age, and that's kind of where fintech steps in. But again, I can't say this emphatically enough, responsible fintech companies who recognize their responsibility, not just as a business, but to consumer protection and regulatory compliance. And those are the kind of companies that we represent at the American Fintech Council, and those that as we continue to evolve in these nascent industries, we don't do it blindly for profit's sake, but we do it with a focus on there's a consumer that needs the access to credit. And the question becomes, and as we were talking about usury caps, how do you balance access to credit with responsible usury limits and responsible regulatory oversight? I think that's the balance that we try to face. The federal government and the Military Lending Act has set that at 36%. We recognize that as the standard of the federal government. We're, we're, I want to, the American Fintech Council embraces state regulatory structures. The challenge for fintech companies that operate in a nimble fashion is trying to keep up with 50-state patchwork of regulatory oversight, and that's where it gets a little tricky for the fintech companies. But again, stand at the ready to work with every state, as we are here today in Colorado and states across the country, to find the right balance to create access to credit. Credit where traditional banks are pulling away. I mean, where, community banks are closing at the fastest clip in history, particularly in minority and rural communities. And so that's where fintech steps up to, to, to help those who are disproportionately being underserved by traditional institutions.
Mr. Bell, the fintechs are stepping up to serve in these communities. Why do you have a problem with their 36%?
Well, because-
Suggested 36%.
Yeah, I mean, we, we believe in tight usury caps because we want loans to be affordably priced, and when loans are aggressively priced by companies that may be located, you know, halfway across the country, they're not really operating in the interest of the New York consumer by charging those really sharp interest rates. So we believe we can develop other mechanisms to make sure that people can get credit that's affordably priced. One example of something we're really concerned about is there's these earned wage payroll advance programs that are operating, some are integrated with employer payroll, some are third-party standalone fintech apps, and some of those companies are now seeking an exception from the New York usury limit law to give payroll advances. These are very short-term loans of like five days or less than two weeks, but according to data that's just come out from the California Department of Financial Protection and Innovation, the APR, a value of the fees that are being charged is as much as 360%. So that's an example of something, like we don't want to see workers in New York having to pay extra fees to get access to their wages. If we can accomplish having faster payments through financial technology, we're all for that, but we don't want to have consumers at the end of the year paying hundreds and hundreds of dollars of fees to get access to their wages, and having those programs carved out from the usury laws would set a bad precedent for other high-cost lenders. So this can quickly get out of control when someone says, you know, "You gave that company an exception to the usury limits, what about us?" And this is what we heard a lot in 2017 and 18. And consumers will get behind on their loans. I mean, the cost of living in New York is very high. It's expensive to get childcare and auto insurance, pay for a car, all these different things that you need. So we've got to make sure that credit is affordably priced, and I think New York has done a good job on that over the years, but we can do better through things like public banking and community development financial institutions, which can give soundly underwritten small-business loans and work with the owners. So we want to use those, you know, have kind of a mixed economy. We don't have to get rid of commercial actors altogether, but like, let's, let's have some options for people that are affordably priced. That's our point of view.
Since the Senate has not been paid from April the 1st, we all may be driven to short-term loans. Since you are my last panel, I'm going to allow you 30 seconds as a summation to sum it up, and of course, you're going last, Mr. Bell. Madam Fisher.
Thank you. I'll use my-
Come a little closer.
Okay. I'll use my 30 seconds to, again, thank you for this opportunity, and again, the Revenue-Based Finance Coalition is really looking forward to working with you to discuss reasonable legislation to weed out the bad actors, set up guardrails, and preserve access to capital. So thank you.
Thank you. Sir?
Thank you, thank you, Senator. And as I mentioned before, you know, responsible fintech companies tend to provide those services where traditional financial companies have stepped away, but again, when acting responsibly. And I think the biggest challenge for fintech companies is regulatory uncertainty, right? We don't know how to operate, in which state we go to, what are our limits, how do we do it? And creating, you know, it's easy to say, we, again, that the patchwork, the 50-state patchwork creates real challenges for our ability to offer that access to credit. And that's what it comes down to when it comes, when it comes to lending, is, is a access to credit at a reasonable price with reasonable terms that are transparent. We're all used to the idea of, "Do you want to save 15% today on your purchase by signing up for our credit card?" Right? That's becoming ingrained in kind of us as a society, but we don't know how much you're going to pay, we don't know what their credit terms are like, we don't know what the interest rates are, and we all accept like, "Okay, I'll do that today, and I'll sign up for that credit card." And you look at companies like Affirm, which is the opposite. They set up their program not to avoid regulatory structure, but they set up their four-payment process to embrace that this is a loan, this is how much you're going to pay, this is what your interest rate is, and by the time you walk out of the store, you know how many months you're going to have to pay, you know how much it's going to cost, and you have a pathway out. And the best part of that is that if you take that loan and you proceed through it safely and honestly, your credit's going to improve. And so it actually is a pathway out of debt versus the, the credit card industry, which we've accepted as sort of a recycling of debt, which has been mentioned a number of times. And so that's what fintech is able to do when, when operated responsibly with a regulatory structure that works.
Well said. Sir?
Thank you. Well, I think the three cardinal principles of financial regulation are safety, soundness, and consumer protection, and what we've seen happening with crypto in the last year or two is highly concerning in that I believe that there is 3.27 billion in crypto scams in 2022 alone. And so consumers don't expect that level of fraud and deception to be taking place in the economy, and the safety and soundness of the financial institutions is also, you know, enjoined or brought up by the recent bank failures. So safety and soundness are incredibly important. I think we all can agree on that, and so we really want to make sure that the New York DFS and the Attorney General have the resources and the authority that they need to protect New Yorkers, and we at New Yorkers for Responsible Lending, you know, want to stand by their side for that. But with crypto, I think we have a special challenge, is it's a new, it's a new technology, it's kind of a, there's a lot of regulatory uncertainty. The SEC is doing a lot, but there's a lot more that we need to do to protect people against the possible and unreasonable risks. So we look forward to working with Banking Committee as those issues may come up in the future.
Thank you. My friends, I really appreciate everyone here and in the virtual world that has taken their time to hear this very important issue. We are going to stay on this issue for a little bit. We're going to, we have not mined the market here well. There is more data mining that we will have to do on cryptocurrency and others. We're going to, in the days to come, we're going to look at the, what impact did cryptocurrency have on any bank failures that have been taking place? We're going to look at that. We hold our responsibility as the Chair of Banking very seriously. A lot has gone on in the banking world in New York State in the last six months and the last three months, and we will try to find out what's going on and where are we going with this. And with that as a, as a direction, this, these panelists have laid the foundation of the conversation. They have laid down the foundation of what is cryptocurrency, what is fintech, what are these things, and so that we will have a better understanding when we, when we go just a little further. I want to thank my staff for putting this together. They did the hard work, and I want to thank all of my other colleagues. Of course, you may remember these great days, Mr. Goldfeder. We, this is the budget season, and everyone is in different rooms huddled around what I'm not fully sure, but they're huddled nonetheless, and, and great things will come from it. Great things will come from it. I don't know what those things are right now, I've been here. But we are, we're going to do, I wanted to thank you, Ms. Fisher. I trust it wasn't as unpleasant. It was better than a root canal, I trust.
It must.
Somewhat, just a little bit. I'm in a good mood, so you get away easy today, sir, and we always have to have you back, Mr. Bell.
Thank you.
You guys really are doing some great work. So to everyone here, I think I thanked, let's see, I did not thank the leader again, she is the one who authorized these, this hearing and others, my staff, and to, oh, yes, the audiovisual team here, I really appreciate it. You've tried very, very hard, and if, and if I didn't come across well, it's because I didn't understand which one of these to work on, so I, I appreciate it. I'll take the weight. Having said that, my friends, we have stayed a little longer than we thought, but I trust it was worth it to you. It was very much worth it to, on behalf of my colleagues. Worth it to us. This hearing is now adjourned. Thank you very much.
Thank you.